Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is James Kane. I have the distinct privilege to serve as your moderator for this evening's session two of the annual town meeting. Please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening. I ask for unanimous consent to avoid reading all of the same material I read for you last evening. Unless there is objection, so ordered. We will now get right down to business, and this evening we will start on Article 30.
Move the printed motion under Article 30. Second.
Article 30 has been moved in second. In Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends Article 30 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
The Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 200A, Section 8A, provides for an alternative procedure for the disposition of abandoned funds, known as tailings, held in the custody of the town. A tailing is a form of unclaimed property that results from a dispersed but uncashed check and represents a liability on the town's financial ledger. Tailings can include uncashed accounts payable and uncashed payroll checks and certain tax overpayments where the property owner cannot be found. The approval of this article and acceptance of the general law would allow for a robust notification process to notify the rightful payee of the check, and if they are not found, the funds would be returned to the general fund of the town for reappraisal.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any comments or questions with reference to Article 30? Not hearing. Yes, Mr. Kirk.
Chris Kirk, Precinct One. How are the recipients notified? Down in Boston, they have a website, Unclaimed Money. You got it, something like that?
It'd be through a variety of means: notification of last known address, publication to the town website, and notification through our newspaper of record, which is the community advocate.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 30? Mr. Segelnik.
John Segelnik, Precinct Two. At what point do we determine the property is abandoned? Like, six months, five years?
Mr. Mizikar.
I don't know if anyone knows the specific date in the process. Mr. Snowden, do you know a specific date? I believe it's after 12 months.
Yeah. There we go. It's a year after the initial postings.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 30? Not hearing or seeing any. This requiring a majority vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed now? The ayes have it. Article 31.
I move the printed motion under Article 31. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 31 by a vote of eight to zero.
Our town meeting members, I just draw to your attention to remind you of the exhibit within your package for Article 31. Mr. Mizikar.
This article proposes to designate 4.84 acres of town-owned property to the care, custody, management, and control of Shrewsbury Electric and Cable Operations, or SELCO, to move SELCO professional administrative and field operations and staff and equipment to this single location. SELCO would likely maintain a small customer service presence in the town hall, but their three other locations would all be diverted to this location.
Anyone from SELCO who would like to make a presentation to Town Meeting? Not see... Oh, gentleman. Come on down.
Good evening. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Roy. I'm the general manager of SELCO, and as Mr. Mizikar articulated very well, we're looking for approval to assume control of this property, to bring our operations efforts into the modern era. Last time SELCO's looked at any type of facility upgrades was 1975. The building we currently occupy on Municipal Drive was built in 1940 and has largely remained the same, and that 1975 date is the addition that was put on to that 1940 building. So I think through different articles that we've talked about, Shrewsbury has evolved significantly since 1975, and therefore, the operational needs have evolved with it. So we're looking to keep pace with the needs of the community through this new facility.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 31 right down front? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Shawna Parker Dalton from Precinct Eight. Hello, Mr. Roy. I am also from 1975, so I appreciate the importance of having an up-to-date facility. I just wanted to ask, this parcel looks very wooded. Will you be making an effort to preserve some of the trees as much as possible while you build your new facility?
Yep, that's a great question, one that's come up commonly through our discussions. Obviously, it's difficult to find that perfect parcel, to not have any challenges affiliated with that, but yes, you know, part of the first step is to come to this body and secure a piece of land so we can then proceed with a, excuse me, a design. But yes, I think you're in good company with fans that would, you know, look to incorporate that character.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 39? The gentleman in the middle.
Naveen Jain, Precinct Four. The article states a portion of the property, stating 4.84 acres. Is there additional property in that area that's not being given to SELCO?
Mr. Mizikar.
No, the motion clarifies that it's the whole property. So the motion itself doesn't say portion. I acknowledge what you're saying on the article, but it is the full piece of land.
Thank you. One follow-up question. This would include moving some of the SELCO usage of Town Hall to this location, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions right down front here.
Nicole Torres, Precinct Eight. What is the legal mechanism by which you're going to take control? Is it a conveyance? Is a deed changing hands?
It's a designation.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Of course you can.
When you say designation, you mean via a deed? Ownership is changing hands?
Go. Why don't we ask counsel to clarify?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town can hold property, real property, for general municipal purposes, or it may designate it for a specific purpose, like school purposes for the fire department, or in this case, the request is that Town Meeting would designate this parcel for SELCO's use. And once so designated, it's controlled by SELCO and can't be used for other purposes unless SELCO would declare it no longer necessary.
So it's in perpetuity, then?
Unless SELCO or, like, just like the Beale School was declared no longer necessary by the school department. If a department that has custody of town-owned property for a particular purpose, if they declare it no longer necessary, we can transfer it to a different purpose or make it available for sale. So it's not necessarily in perpetuity, but it would be held, the request is that this be held for the specific purpose of SELCO's use and not general municipal purposes.
Thank you.
Were there further questions? Yes, the gentleman on the aisle. Hello, Mr. Manella. How are you?
My name's Fran Manella, Precinct Three. I'm wondering, are you shovel-ready? Is this like now?
No, sir.
What's your timeline to do the work?
Go ahead, Mr. Roy.
All right. Nope, thank you for the question. Good question. Nope, we are definitely not shovel-ready. Step one is to seek your approval for this property. We have set other wheels and motions, such as we received quotes for a surveyor, and we've also advertised, not selected, but advertised bids for a designer. So we don't even have a design, but we know the size and the location is suitable for what we're looking for, and then subject to the approval from this body, we would then take the next steps.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Steve Scott, Precinct Nine. I'm curious, is there a plan for the disposition of the properties on Municipal Drive, the facilities on Parker Road, and at Town Hall?
Mr. Roy.
Sure. Another great question. Thank you. So a definitive plan? No, but definitely, we've had numerous conversations about what we would do with that property. There's still life left in the Municipal Drive building. It has a fueling station that's used by all departments, so there would definitely be a future use for that. It's just the use for SELCO purposes have been exceeded. Same with Town Hall, you know, with the other building projects at play, you know, using that space for the other Town Hall purposes can be, would be advantageous to the other uses needed at the municipal facilities. So yes, there would definitely be a future use.
Mr. Rittigliano.
Chris Rittigliano, Precinct Seven. I was, I had the understanding that SELCO was under contract to purchase the property on Route Nine, which was Patrick Subaru. Is that still happening, or is that not happening?
Mr. Roy.
Another great question. So that was our effort in 2023. That would be indicative. We've been looking at this for some time, and so we never went to contract phase. We had reached terms of a sale price, however, based on issues on their end, they backed out of it, so we never went to an actual contract.
Further comments or questions? Ms. Dupre.
Krista Dupre, Precinct One. Could you remind us if there were any other properties in town looked at? And I'm also curious of the value of this property. Thank you.
Mr. Roy.
Yep. So we've done a feasibility analysis of the current Municipal Drive property, which was not ideal, obviously, trying to build in an existing facility with limited space. The other one is, if you go back to 1940, the character of that neighborhood was a lot different than it is today, so it's not ideal having a 24/7 operation as a residential area. So that's one of the things that was a detractor from using the existing property. We've looked at Parker Road because we have our facility up there in the old North Shore School. A lot of the same issues were in that situation, where now we're going to build a 24/7 property in another residential neighborhood with an existing school operation. Not ideal. We looked at the Patrick Subaru situation. There are other pieces of land around town that we looked at, less ideal than this one because then we'd have to procure that property. And to the question about D4 Station, these were heavily wooded areas. So this one came up through just our continual analysis of trying to find the most ideal circumstance, and this one checked the most boxes.
Ms. Hilton. I'm sorry. The value of the property? One moment. Mr. Mizikar. Sorry about that.
That's at $326,300.
Did you hear that, Krista?
$326,300.
Very good. Ms. Hilton.
Bridgette Hilton, Precinct Seven. I understand you guys are under tight space constraints, and I understand the importance of this move, so I just want to say that first. What do we expect the impact on SELCO rates to be to fund the cost of the plan and development of this property? What's going to be the trickle-down effect to voters in town?
Mr. Roy.
Yep, another great question. Thank you for that one. So as much as I'd like to go into my love of municipal light plant financials, I'll stick to the concise answer. It's different than, say, building a new high school or police station. All utilities in Massachusetts are required to set aside a 3% depreciation for any capital investment they make. So take that building in 1940 or the addition in 1975. Since that time, we've been setting aside 3% depreciation of that capital investment every single year as corporate as part of the rates. So that money then goes into our depreciation reserves, which you can see in our financials, and that's the capital that we can then put towards revamping and revitalizing or rebuilding those facilities in the future. So that's what we would dip into here. So it's not like a necessarily specific build incorporated into the rates. The other key point I think is noteworthy is we have the two businesses. So this is a joint-use facility between our cable operations and our electric operations, and so we use both of those businesses and their financials to balance the financial impact of that. So it's some mix of cash that we've saved and some mix of incorporating the rates into the two businesses.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Wonderful financial management. Question, though. So you didn't really answer the second part of that question, which is, or maybe I just want some clarification. Is the expected impact on the average electric or cable bill in town expected to be $0?
$0? So I would say no, right? Because we can't guarantee zero impact to a foreseeable $30 million investment. So take that component. The second piece of that answer is it's yet to be determined what percentage of cash versus borrowing we'd go into once the design is completed. So it's going to be something north of, you know, zero, but it's, as we try and do with all rates, hopefully, as you can see through your bills, we would expect the impact to be, you know, less than significant, maybe a dollar. You know, it varies, right? If you, back to some of the discussion yesterday, right? If you're an internet customer, you might see the impact. If you're an electric customer, which most people have to be, you'll see that impact, but you can, we offer all the other programs to help lower your bills, so there's a balancing act there, and we encourage you to leverage those programs as well. But we try to do everything we can to minimize bill impact, and like I said, with the depreciation, it's already incorporated into the bills and the rate-making metrics. So it's going to be larger than zero, so taking that question at a literal answer, no, it won't be zero, but it'll be something small.
Yes.
Louise Garone, Precinct Eight. And please forgive me if this is a naive question. We went home last night very disappointed at having spent $2.09 of $2.25 million on design for something that isn't going to happen. Are there design firms that will work on contingency? By that I mean contingency of acceptance of the allocation of funds to build the plan? And again, if it's naive, let me know now.
Mr. Roy.
No, no such thing. You're in good company here. So to my understanding, I have not found that works on contingency of a successful project. Kind of dovetailing on an answer from before, we have secured smaller-cost services or solicited quotes. We haven't, you know, secured the contracts, but like surveying. So they had ideas with approval from this body. We would then do a survey, and before investing substantial sums into a design, we'd make sure we identified any potential pitfalls, you know, to further highlight some of the coordination behind the scenes. You know, we've talked to the experts within Town Hall to help us flush out any red flags before we even get to this point, of which we haven't found any. So we've done our best to make sure it's a go-ahead project.
Mr. Manzi. Right behind you.
John Manzi, Precinct Ten. Several years ago, Worcester Outfit was trying to buy SELCO. Is anything, is there any way we can be sold in the future to another entity? Because we do have a wonderful situation here.
Mr. Roy.
Another great question. We cannot be sold without this body going through a bunch of different votes and deciding we did something terribly wrong to give away the amazing asset that you have. So the literal answer is yes. You know, this body could go through the legal process to do so, but it's not without your approval. It's totally up to the folks in this room.
Right in the middle.
Hi, Hillary King, Precinct Six. Also, maybe a naive question. Do we need to provide this property to the care of SELCO in order for you to continue your planning efforts? I feel like there's not quite enough information for folks to say, sure, go ahead and take it at this point. So I'm just curious.
Mr. Roy.
Yep, nope, that's a great question. So I think to the answer from before, one of the great components of having the municipality is that land, even though it would be under the care, custody, and control of SELCO, it's still your land. And so if something happened or it's not feasible, it's still the asset that then gets returned back to this body to then decide what to do with it. And so in order to more specifically answer your question, in order to proceed with the due diligence on the property and then ultimately make the investment on behalf of the utility ratepayers of the different services, you do, it is best practice to have the control of that property to just protect that investment, if you will, from unforeseen circumstances.
Follow-up?
Please. So I guess then what are the next steps of this body? I don't, I don't think the question has been asked already. What are the next steps for further approvals of this, of this work?
Mr. Roy.
Yep, good question. So with care, custody, and control, it just gives us that confidence to go in, hire the surveyor, hire the design firm, do those same building steps as you're used to. That then results in that design of all the things that we need to move our operation over there. One perhaps interesting or noteworthy point, if you look, say, at the Town GIS for the Municipal Drive property, and you'll see in the, in the property listing, it says care, custody, and control of SELCO. So it goes back to just the language from the origins of Mass General Law with the statute, and same thing, back to the question of the future of the property on Municipal Drive. The Light Board would then vote that it's now surplus and be returned back to general use, municipal use.
Mr. Adler doesn't have a question. Carol Swyden, please.
Hi, Carol Swyden, Precinct Eight. Several questions. When you move out of Municipal Drive, you're going to move out entirely? What happens to that piece of property? So all the trucks and all the personnel are going to go to the new piece of property. And then when you vacate out of Town Hall, will the other offices in Town Hall be able to utilize that space? Because there's a shortage there.
Mr. Roy, I heard two questions. Why don't you answer the first one, and then I'll ask Mr. Mizikar to cover the space question at Town Hall.
Sure. Yep. So, yes, so what we would do then, once we've fully moved out of the Municipal Drive property, we would then, I would then request the Light Board to designate that property as surplus, and then it would come back to the general municipal use to then be used for any and all projects or needs that municipal use could, could come up with, you know, any number of ideas, right? DPW, water, rec, anyone. So once, but in order to do that, the first step is to vacate our use, and so then we would just turn it back over for general use.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Mr. Mizikar, do you want to cover the second point, please?
Yes, we, we would be able to utilize those office space for municipal functions.
So do you think it's a possibility that DPW could use?
No, it's, it's not enough space. When we are looking at the Town Hall in consideration of the facilities project that was approved by this body, we were targeting the use of the SELCO space and put that into our overall space planning. So we're looking at the full complement of Town Hall, including DPW moving down on South Street. So it's this, you know, it's a space issue and then a management, single-site operations concern that, you know, we're trying to address for the facilities project.
Further comments or questions on the orange shirt, I believe, or red, right there on the aisle?
Tony Mastermatteo, Precinct Ten. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Roy. Seeing how this land will still be owned by the town of Shrewsbury and its proximity to the DRC, which is also run by the town, would the SELCO planning potentially consider making some additional public parking there for, for the use of the DRC? Right now, North Quinsigman gets pretty congested up and down, all the way up to the 290 Bridge, and it's very difficult and dangerous to walk that stretch of road, and there's kids and families that walk that road. So it would be sure nice if there was some parking that was available there, if that could be considered. Would they consider that? Thank you.
Mr. Roy.
I can give a nice short answer to that one. That is a 100% yes. We've talked about that. And, yep, not to get long-winded, I mean, happy to talk about this at any point. I'm a huge public power fan, and so those are the exact opportunities we're always looking for, to incorporate additional public benefit to projects that we undertake as utility.
Ms. Mackenzie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mindy Mackenzie, Precinct One. I just was curious if you move forward with this project, if you'll still contribute $1.4 million to our budget. Thank you.
Mr. Roy.
I don't want to get ahead of myself and speak for the Light Board, but based on how great they've been, I would say yes. I think that's...
Further comments or questions with reference to the article? Mr. Ghulie.
Bill Ghulie, Precinct Eight. I'm wondering if you have considered the possibility of selling this land, because that area is growing. There have been a lot of new businesses there in the last five years or so, and also, not only could we make some money from the sale, but then you would have a taxable unit that could be continuing to contribute to the budget of the town.
We haven't considered...
Ms. Mackenzie?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mindy Mackenzie, Precinct 1. I just was curious if you move forward with this project, if you'll still contribute $1.4 million to our budget. Thank you.
Mr. Roy?
I don't want to get ahead of myself and speak for the Light Board, but based on how great they've been, I would say yes. I think that's...
Further comments or questions with reference to the article, Mr. Ghulie?
Bill Ghulie, Precinct 8. I'm wondering if you have considered the possibility of selling this land, because that area is growing. There have been a lot of new businesses there in the last five years or so. And also, not only could we make some money from the sale, but then you would have a taxable unit that could be continuing to contribute to the budget of the town.
We haven't considered selling this particular piece of land, and I would say generally, as the Select Board has looked at land use and town-owned property over the last several years, when we're looking at a horizon of, not to be dramatic, but 100, 150 years, you know, we all assume the town will still be here. The town only owns a very limited amount of land for general purposes that doesn't have some type of open space restriction or conservation restriction on it. So, I think it's important that we preserve those pieces of property for municipal use rather than dispose of them and try to make the short-term profit, even though we would receive tax dollars, rather than have to sell a piece of land and then maybe in 25, 50, 150 years, have to go looking for land and buy it. So, it'd be, at least, my recommendation to the board as they continue on this work, that we understand what land we own and see what opportunities we may see into the long term for use for them.
Could I do a follow-up there?
Of course, Mr. Ghulie.
I guess, it's sort of the same question, but have you looked into this option to see what the real dollar amounts would be, so that we could have a way of comparing that to what would happen now and 150 years in the future?
We have not run that financial analysis on this piece of land.
Thank you.
Ms. Petrucci?
Melanie Petrucci, Precinct 1. I'm not going to move the question. I actually have a, I wanted to know what the benefit for Selco would be. I know there are some benefits that are fairly obvious, but what would the benefits be to operations for Selco by consolidation and then extending the benefits would be available for the community?
Mr. Roy?
Great question. What time do we adjourn? But I'll give you some bullet points. So, I went back, if anyone's interested. So, the Subaru question came up a short time ago. I put together a memo for the Board at that time, which answered that question in a fairly concise way. Some of the key items on that include the fact that, so, for instance, right now, like, our trucks are parked double-wide, and obviously, trucks today are a different size than they were in 1940. And then, the addition in '75, we've done everything. We've widened the doors. We've tried to raise the roof. So, we actually have to send our trucks, even the new ones, to go out and have sheet metal removed in order to fit them in the bays. So, we'd have, A, you know, much better, efficient operations while not having to do the Tetris act of moving trucks around to respond to emergencies. We won't have to pay the additional, just unnecessary cost of trying to cut body panels off to fit them within the confines of the garage itself. There's no fire protection in that, right? Hasn't been abated for asbestos. There's no, I already said fire protection. There's, the HVAC system, in some cases, seem original to the building. So, there's all of that. In addition, with the new building right now, to throw a little bit of a cable side to it, our data center, or head-end, as you know it, for our cable operation is entirely housed in Parker Road, which is an old school, which obviously was well-suited for it when the cable was started up in 1986. It's largely unchanged from 1986. And so, as part of the new building, we'd incorporate a modern data center that is resilient and secure to modern data center standards. So, that's another on the cable side. Seating, parking, you know, just the usual things that come along with an old building. Roof doesn't, won't leak onto our inventory. The other big one, just to touch on the inventory, we're wrapping up our audit now. A perennial item that comes up on the audit is inventory controls. And so, right now, we're scattered about the town. We rent off-site warehouse space. And so, for our two-person inventory team to manage, it's extremely difficult, especially during our fiber project, where we have at any given time, perhaps 45 contractors looking for materials and trying to track everything that goes out and goes in, all of that. I'll probably stop myself there, but all of those things combine to more efficient operations.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Right up the middle.
Yes, I have a question about maybe the...
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Sarkisian, Precinct 4. And I guess I would like to say, Selco is definitely an asset to the community. We all enjoy what you provide for us, and I certainly understand you need more space. But, I'm not liking this site personally for its proximity to Lake Quinzigman, to the rowing center, for the trees. I hate to see it turn more industrial. I would prefer to see a more park, lake-oriented. That's just my opinion. And I guess I'm wondering if, in the planning, master planning, if any park-like things were looked at. Also, looking at the mail center, there's already not, you know, no trees over there. Is there any way that this facility could be over there? And, you know, I guess I'd be willing to see you purchase other land and keep this, you know, more in keeping with the lake and the rowing center. Did I ask that question?
Yep. Nope. Good question. Thank you for that question. So, that is, totally, totally understand what you're saying. You know, that goes back to, you know, and I'm sorry for repeating myself, but goes back to that 2023 Subaru effort. We're exactly to your point, right? So, we've been modifying our operations for some time. At some point, you just have to stop the bleeding. And so, that's where, since 2023, that didn't work out. We've been looking at existing properties for the exact points you mentioned. Same with, you know, my prior explanation about our existing properties. And it's just been a real challenge to find that intersection point where all of the ideal circumstances come together. However, that being said, when we do look at designing this building, and not to get too far ahead of ourselves, we are mindful of that point. You know, obviously, it's inevitable that we would have to make space for the warehouse and the garage and all of that. You know, we have the parking needs. That's another component. So, in order to create parking, you know, obviously, that requires some deforestation for sure. But at the same time, you know, we feel like, as a reflection of the community, we would assure that, you know, better than perhaps anyone else, we would make sure the values of the community are reflected in the design. So, that's the ideal model. If there's another parcel out there, we're always open to ideas, but this is, you know, this is what we've come up with through a few years of analysis.
Thank you. Ms. Steele? Just wait for a microphone, please.
Sorry. Lisa Steele, Precinct 6. Comment and a question. The comment is, I hope you're going to keep at least some customer service presence at the Town Hall. It's just so much easier to get to, particularly for people who may have a little bit of trouble getting all the way out there. And then, the question was, are you intending to put a fueling facility on this property, or is that just going, is that going to stay at municipal?
Mr. Roy? He lost his mic.
I could just yell.
You're not on the record. Okay.
How about now? All right. Okay, so, good question. So, that's a good point. I know that's something that has come up when this idea originally came up several years ago. And so, yes, we're absolutely open to making sure we provide convenient customer service options for people. That's incorporated in the design, and I think you see it in the language of the Warren article. Question two, wait, what was question two was?
Fueling.
Oh, yeah, fueling facility. Ah, another good one. How did I forget that? So, fueling facility, again, back to the point that Municipal Drive has life left in it. The current discussions have centered around keeping that facility intact at Municipal Drive. You know, another big initiative of ours is electrification. So, the thing we've discussed and even kind of contacted our insurance agents about is migrating that towards charging stations. So, again, as we design a facility that's intended to have the same duration as the current facility, dating back to the '40s, looking forward, what does the fleet look like? What does Selco look like? What's the community look like 70, 80 years from now? If our efforts are successful, it's going to be much heavier into electrification, so we won't need a fueling facility. We'll be looking at charging stations.
Further comments or questions with reference to this article, the gentleman right in the middle.
Raju Palvati, Precinct 4. I have a technology question. So, I understand there's a data center right now at the Municipal Drive, right? Correct? What is the size of the data center? And are we technologically prepared to handle the network from there, from Quinzigman? As well as, I understand that some of the majors like Facebook want to go underwater for their data centers, being right next to North, I mean, Quinzigman. Is that a possibility in the future? Now, you're talking about 40 years to 50 years in the future or so.
Mr. Roy?
Yep. Love that question. So, yes. So, we feel this is this optimum time to do exactly that. You know, again, we still have to do some of the surveying. Is the data center underground versus above ground? Are there flooding situations? You know, we haven't gone that far, you know, to be totally candid. However, I can, I will say that this is, a lot of what we do will certainly be more modern than what we have today. You know, it allows the opportunity to design in redundancy, multiple paths. You know, right now, we're building off of infrastructure that was designed going back to the '80s. So, we do, not to discuss some of the choke points in the system, but we do have critical poles that we want to mitigate, to reduce that risk for potential service disruptions. This gives us the opportunity to move infrastructure underground, which is more resilient, and perhaps, you know, implement best-practice design to ensure that data center is secure and reliable 100% of the time. And then, just a tangential point, this would be in conjunction with a secondary data center in a geographically diverse area across town, so you'd have full backup.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 31? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just a second.
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. Can you speak to whether our current data center is like a tier one, two, three, or four, and what the new tier would be for the new data center?
Sure.
Mr. Roy?
Yep. Another good question. I'm going to be totally honest, and I'm not entirely sure how they would classify the different tiers of the data center. Part of this is also dovetailing on the transition from the coaxial plant, as I think everyone here has probably been firsthand experience with. We're doing fiber optic throughout the entire town. That has different needs than the old coax plant. It's more compact. So, some of this is also an ability to right-size the data center, to accommodate the fiber infrastructure, rather than trying to heat and cool this big area that housed racks and racks and racks of coaxial equipment. And I apologize, I'm not sure how that would translate into defining a tier, but it would be a fiber-based data center as opposed to design for coaxial plant from the '80s.
Mr. Budenhagen? We need a, Gene, if you could introduce yourself, and we need a mic. Check it now, Here you go.
Quick question. You've been looking at this to relocate for several years. Have you put money aside into surveying and the design cost? So, that's already put away in a separate account, so you can cover that without any problems. Thank you.
Mr. Roy?
Yes, that is, we'll be doing a financial update at an upcoming board meeting. It's clear with our financial cash statements. So, the short answer is yes, we have all that.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to the article, right in the
Yes. What I am wondering, would you be putting a substation?
Would you please introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Sarkisian, Precinct 4. And would a substation be part of this property at any point?
Mr. Roy?
This property, no. But you bring a good point. We, you know, we have discussed it would be nice, maybe one on the north side of town at some point, but for this property and this project, no.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference, way over there on the aisle?
Hi, Carissa Ford, Precinct 3. Could you explain what role Town Meeting will play in this process in the future? So, is this our one and only time to vote on this, or will we also be voting on the design phase and the build phase?
Mr. Roy?
Another good question. So, municipal utilities are somewhat unique in that regard. So, we come to Town Meeting for authorization to utilize the land. We are a member of the Massachusetts Municipal Wholesale Electric Company, which coincidentally was Massachusetts' Joint Action Agency formed by Jim Baker of Shrewsbury back in the '50s. And so, part of that program, they offer pooled loans. And so, that's the same pool that we use to build generating facilities, transmission lines, and some have used it for fiber or buildings. And so, that pooled loan is separate from this body, so it doesn't conflict with, you know, just generally speaking, right, schools, police facilities, borrowing limits for a community. It's a separate pool that's used for utility projects that really, the only thing that Town Meeting is needed is land.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Of course you can.
Would you then consider, or is it required to have public comment or folks from the community speak once the design is prepared, so that people can continue to give their input to the design happening on these 4.8 acres?
Mr. Roy?
Sure. That's a great question, too. We accept feedback at all times. So, to your point, while there might not be a formal process to show up to a meeting, I mean, you'll see, we'll have building discussions at the Light Board. So, the Light Board provides a varied set of duties, including authorization for these type of capital expenditures and allocation of depreciation funds that I spoke to earlier. So, that's a huge forum to provide the feedback. Otherwise, a simple email to myself, we absolutely incorporate that. In fact, you know, even the commentary from tonight, we'll take that back and incorporate that in the design.
Further comments or questions with reference to the article, right down front?
Anand Sharma, Precinct 9. I have a question regarding the growth. So, what are the yearly growth we have for cable? And any like competition like satellite, like a lot of people are choosing to forego satellite, and how is it affecting? We need same kind of manpower in the future, or if competition is there, then we need to reduce our operation also. So, that case, how we can deal with that? And the last question, like, how difficult to stay on the same location and manage the operation?
Mr. Roy?
Sure. So, just make sure I get those three questions. So, the personnel component is the first question? Is that, I'm sorry, Mr. Personnel?
Competition, like, how... Competition, like, how, do we have any completion in the market? Like, a lot of people are going to the satellite internet, satellite internet?
Yeah.
So how is, Selco is handling that?
For the internet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yes, so for the internet.
T-Mobile is providing, AT&amp;T's internet is providing, so.
Yep.
What is the rate of the growth we have yearly?
Yeah, so if I'm understanding the question correctly, so the internet side of things, right, we have multiple wholesale providers that then, that we contract with to provide that internet, and that's where that data center would come into play. So those would be the redundant paths into the data center at the new facility for our internet, our bulk, oops, our bulk internet wholesale.
How much yearly growth we have? So like internet, how much yearly growth we have in the internet? Like, you are making the new subscriber, new customer every year? So what is the percentage of that?
Was the?
Percentage of how many new customer you are adding in your data center?
What percentage of new customers are we getting? Oh, I see. So that's a good question. On the internet side, we have, and I have to do this off the top of my head because I don't have my computer here, but I believe we are at something around 90% of customer base in all of Shrewsbury. So we have about 14,000 subscribers. And if you compare that to, say, meter count, where everyone needs electricity, so we have just over 16,000 meters. So there's arguably 2,000 premises in town that receives internet from someone else.
I want to know the growth, like, so you already have 40,000, like, every year, how many you are adding new customers?
How many are we adding every year?
Yeah.
Well, that varies, right? So one of the prior presentations we gave, we're now in a competitive market, right? So I think to the point you're making, right, you have Starlink or wireless 5G. So we do see a little bit more churn today, but overall, we probably, like I said, we're about at saturation. So maybe we add 100, you know, 10 subscribers per month. Some go down, but then we see most people are coming back. If they receive a teaser mailer to say, get this hotspot from Verizon, they tend to come back. So we've retained a pretty steady number of subscribers, and it hovers right around the 14,000 to 15,000 mark in between there.
Okay, thank you. So my question is that when we can manage on same location, why we have to go to the new location? When we can do the, we can manage the operation on the same location, why we need the new facility then?
Sure, good question, because it's.
Okay, just one more question, and we got to move it along. Lots of other people want to talk. Go ahead, Mr. Roy.
Yep, no, so that's a good question, because it's not just particular to the data center, right? So it's largely driven by the electric load and the fact that the facility we're using is to the 1975 standards, and the data center is based on a 1986 school facility. So they're inadequate even by current standards.
Okay, thank you.
Gentleman in the aisle. I request we move the question. Motion has been, motion has been made and seconded to move the question regarding Article 31. All of those in favor of moving the questions shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We will now move to a vote on Article 31. All of those in favor of Article 31 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Article 32.
Article 32.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 32 by a vote of eight to zero.
Article 32, as folks know, seeks to establish a school building committee on a high school addition and renovation funding. I will ask the Chair of the School Committee to come forward to start the discussion.
The School Committee would like to provide some background information for your consideration with regard to Article 32. With the Select Board's support, the School Committee submitted statements of interest in 2023 and 2024 to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to be considered for their grant program to assist with financing the cost of a potential future renovation and expansion project at Shrewsbury High School. The statement of interest was not accepted into the MSBA's grant program in 2023. Applying for an MSBA grant is a very competitive process, as there are many worthy projects. On December 13th of 2024, the MSBA issued an invitation to the town of Shrewsbury to enter into the eligibility phase of its building project pipeline for a potential future expansion at Shrewsbury High School, where the MSBA will consider partnering with the town to jointly fund such a project. Shrewsbury was one of 22 projects selected out of 47 submissions across the state. One of the components of the eligibility period is forming a school building committee for the project in order to move into the next phase of a feasibility study, which would look at what options would most cost-effectively solve the problem of chronic overcrowding at the high school, as well as replace critical building elements such as the roof and HVAC system. The article before you today is simply a vote to establish a building committee. It does not commit the town to go forward with a project. Forming a building committee is the next step for the town to take to gather information regarding a potential project, so that the community can be presented with information and options concerning the scope and cost of the project. Partnering with the MSBA to solve the problem of overcrowding at Shrewsbury High School and to update building systems that are approaching the end of their useful life is fiscally responsible measure to take on behalf of the town. For the Beal School, the MSBA's reimbursement rate for the project was 54.86%. Per the MSBA timeline, there would be no funding agreement regarding the project cost and the reimbursement rate from the MSBA until the summer of 2027 at the earliest. It is the School Committee's position that the building committee should be formed so that the town can explore leveraging MSBA funding to address the overcrowding, roof replacement, and the HVAC systems at the high school, which are all known issues that need to be addressed by the town. The Shrewsbury School Committee respectfully asks for your support of Article 32. The School Committee unanimously supported this article with a 5-0 vote at its May 14, 2025, meeting. Thank you.
Do you want to be heard? Select Board.
Select Board. The Select Board has been split on its vote on this potential project and the formation of the building committee, so we do not have a unified position for or against it.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 32? Yes.
Barb Trudell, Precinct 7. I just want to be clear, this, if we were to pass this motion, it merely keeps us in the queue for the Massachusetts state funding, whereas if we don't pass this, then that means all of the tax burden for, all the cost burden for this project would be borne by the taxpayers. Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Mizuka.
It is, if the project proceeds, that's correct, yes.
So, okay.
Further comments or questions? Mr. Kirk.
Oh, I got you.
I'm going to move to the other side here to get, stop being difficult. Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. Just a, just a question, a clarification. The motion reads, "Establish a building committee for the repair, renovation, expansion, and/or replacement of the Shrewsbury High School." Is the word "replacement" there for legal boilerplate, or is it really serious?
Mr. Mizuka.
It is mainly boilerplate. MSBA requires us to use their language when voting at the local level, and all options would be considered for this project. But the reality is, the conditions of the school, it's very unlikely that replacement would be the selected option.
Okay, thank you. Thank God.
Further comments or questions with ref, way up back, Ms. Remington.
Hi, Suzanne Remington, Precinct 9. I strongly support this article and encourage others to do so as well. I am thinking of the time when my kids were in school and a lot of the folks that are my contemporaries were out there fighting for the schools. I think that we and everybody else has a responsibility to think about the kids that are not in school yet and the kids that will be in the high school. I think we need to take a look at it, because if we don't, it's dead in the water, right? So this project will not even, we can't consider moving it forward unless we have a building committee and get more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on the aisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fran Manella, Precinct 3. I rise in support also of this article. It's a very necessary first step to see what we can do. It's short money, and I think it's very important for the kids and for the town.
Further comments, right on the aisle, sir.
Kevin McGlaughlin, Precinct 10. In informal discussions with honorable colleagues here, and so far, some of the feedback we've heard, there's a lot of positive sentiment, I think, about this article. But I would respectfully ask someone from the Select Board to maybe give a brief synopsis of the nature of the deadlock, because to me, this seems like a no-brainer. But then again, I have skin in the game. I have three girls in the school system yet to enter high school. And the idea of, you know, the ramifications that might include losing accreditation, it's just a non-starter. So if, if we could hear someone, from someone on the Select Board.
Members of the Select Board.
I'm happy to share my position. I don't disagree that there's no harm in forming this committee and Town Meeting, this body, will have the right to then vote on whether or not we invest in the feasibility study. I think that, sitting in this position, I hear a lot from community members about how we put things into motion. I watched with a lot of curiosity last night as we went through Article 6. That was our $160 million operating budget, and 56% of that is directly related to the schools. And when we include shared services, such as maintenance and health insurance, it's about 65% of our operating budget, and that leaves 35% for police, fire, other public safety, DPW, administration, et cetera, et cetera. So I am concerned about the cost of this. I'm concerned about our ability to sustain the services that we have already, knowing that we're limited under Proposition 2 and 1/2, and the feedback that I'm getting from the community about an override. And so to then put into motion a, what I consider to be probably the most significant capital project that this town will have seen, I'm concerned. And so I have expressed my thoughts on it, because I want the community to know that we're looking long-term. I know that there's crowding in the schools, in the high school. I think it could be debate about the definition of severe overcrowding. I certainly am not looking to compromise our status. I also think it's important, for me as an individual, to make sure that this does not signal that I'm not in support of schools. I think our school system, our school department, is exceptional, and I commend them for everything that they've done. My kids have gone through the system. I know that my property value is high because of the value that our schools bring. And so it's a balance of making sure, from a fiscal position, that we don't put ourselves in a position where we compromise all of it. And so I'm concerned about the cost. And it's tough, because I, I expect that Town Meeting will approve to move forward on this, but I do think that we have to keep a close eye on our ability to fund everything that this town needs to not only sustain what it has, but to keep up with the cost of inflation. And this would be a significant tax increase to build out the expansion. It would be additional tax dollars to staff it, to expand programming, et cetera. So that is my personal position on why I have had pause on moving this process forward.
Thank you. Thank you. And just a quick follow-up, and it's not necessarily a question, but more probably a statement, that I hope that the Select Board will also consider the opportunity cost of not taking advantage of this opportunity. The opportunity cost being, you know, if our kids don't get the best possible education that they can, as, a lot of them will probably be future residents who, you know, might join this body or take on town leadership positions, become business owners, their success depends a lot on our support. And so I hope you would consider the opportunity cost not behind the financial cost. That's all, thanks.
Gentleman in the middle.
I do understand the concerns about the sticker price of a possible expansion. I do want to say that I feel like we shouldn't close the door without even looking through it and seeing what's on the other side. I graduated from Shrewsbury High School in 2020. It was the busiest year we ever had. This is something that I think, if you ask your children, you ask current students, they're all going to say, it's too crowded, we need an expansion. With that said, I do want to ask whether the MSBA would be providing any support to the committee, or would they only provide money once things are in motion? Would this 35 grand be the only funding for the committee?
Mr. Mizuka.
So in this initial phase, there's no particular appropriation that's required, but MSBA advises us from pre-application through ribbon-cutting, you know, soup to nuts on any project that we have engaged with them and signed contracts with. So they do provide financial and technical support as we work our way through their process. They will review the education plan and the enrollment projections in this initial phase to ensure that we are prepared to meaningfully enter into design if this body would move forward, both tonight and then in the future.
Further comments or questions, right down front in the middle. Yes.
Precinct 3, Sabah Khan. I understand the concerns for the cost of this project, but I was wondering if now is not the right time, then when would be the right time?
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference, right in the aisle? No, that aisle up there, then, then that aisle.
Brian Costello, Precinct 9. I'm in support of the school system, and I just have a question about the format of the committee. I think we need to shift the focus from initiating a capital project process, which is what this building committee is, and I don't know the answer, by the way, towards sort of conducting an inclusive, resident-driven, listening effort. You know, before, before just having a capital committee, which by its nature is sort of like, we're going to build something, I think we need to make sure that this committee has a public meetings or an ability to listen to residents that are outside of the interest level. In other words, if you look at the makeup of this committee, it's everybody with a vested interest, which is great, but there are a lot of folks in town that might be worried about their taxes going up, the elderly, other folks without children. And so I just want to make sure that, we have to make sure that those folks have a voice. voice in this process. If it's a building committee, I get it, but I'd love to see a commitment to open meetings that people can actually kind of give their feedback on.
On the aisle.
Lindsay Heffernan, Precinct 1. Full disclosure, I just rolled off of six years on school committee and I twice voted to put this project into the MSBA. And I want to tell all of you why I have done that and why I continue to stand here and urge all of you to support this project tonight. Our schools are an absolute excellent resource, as many of you have already mentioned. We educate 6,000 children and have nearly 1,000 employees, many of whom are also residents and some of whom are in this room tonight. And we need both, not just the people, but we need the space to do that job and to do that job well. This project is well-studied, desperately needed, and fiscally responsible step forward to allow the state to potentially fund up to 50% of our town's capital needs. I want to talk about each one of those. It's well-studied. Back in 1997, members of this body, I believe, engaged in a study to assess the town's buildings to support the school system. And that study led to 25 years of future projects. In the Beal Building Committee, this committee, this town meeting, supported the doing of a new assessment that was completed in 2021. In partnership with the town, the school committee looked at every single school building in this town. There is a 300-page report that is on the website of the school system. You can find it if you Google, I think it's Long Range Fiscal Health of this town or something of that sort, and it's up on the school's website. It is fair to say that the schools are a huge component of our town's buildings. In fact, they make up 88% because we educate 6,000 children in them every single day. That assessment looked at every single system, from heating to plumbing to roofing to windows, and assessed all of the needs. It ID'd this project as the most, most needed and critical one for all of the schools. This project's also desperately needed. We are over capacity. And I not just, I do not just mean that there's crowded hallways. I do have two high school children and they talk about that, but I'm not worried about crowded hallways. What I am worried about is the programming that we can provide. We are deficient in core academic areas. That means that we don't provide AP economics in our schools, even though others do. That means that we don't provide English electives that other towns similar to ours do in our system. We are deficient in special education spaces. We are deficient in career and technical education spaces. So if we wanted more pathway programs, like furthering what has started with biomedical and electrical programming, we can't do that in this space that we have. We're deficient in lunch. We cannot feed the children and we don't have, we don't have both enough time given the size, but we can't move them through the lunchroom. We also have an HVAC system that is nearly 25 years old and a roof that's 25 years old. So those things just need to be replaced, given the building. Those deficiencies are noted in that report and they walk through the square footage that we are behind, 41,000 square feet in core academic spaces.
Excuse me, town meeting member. Could we just keep it to maybe a follow-up?
Yes, sort of. This is also fiscally responsible, okay? Why is it fiscally responsible? Every single one of you pays sales tax, right? Sales tax, one cent of the sales tax goes to the Mass School Building Authority. I'd like that money to come back to this town. That means that that money, coming back here, we would have both a strong audit of the work with the Mass School Building Authority. They helped us design and deliver the Beal School, under budget, I will say, and that wins awards now for being such a well-designed school. This project is a first step. I have a sixth grader who will probably never enter this building. That's how long this process is going to take. So I encourage you to vote tonight to take what is a responsible step, a fiscally conservative step, and also this $35,000 could be part of the reimbursement if we continue along this process. So please vote yes tonight.
McConnell, Precinct 7. First of all, I want to say the school system in this town has been excellent. My children went through it, they have thrived through it, and most people that I know have gone through and have done that. And yes, if we do do an addition, it's going to cost money and we have to keep that in mind as well, hopefully keep it as low as we can. But what I really want to know, and through moderator to the chair of the Select Board, what did the other Select Board members think? Were there any that were approved, that were for this? And if they were, would they be able to tell us what they thought? Thank you.
I know Carlos has asked to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carlos Garcia, Precinct 1. I am a proud graduate of the high school and I'm proud to see some town meeting members here tonight that have also walked through those halls and have experienced the overcrowding at the school. As Ms. Heffernan mentioned, it is not just navigating the hallways, it is affecting programming. And I know firsthand that there were many classes that I was unable to take due to the overcrowding. And that situation has only gotten worse since I graduated, I think exactly 10 years ago, this week. So I think that I supported this project. I support this article because I think it is very important for us to stay within the MSBA pipeline. It is a very competitive process, as was mentioned previously, and I think that if we were to take, if we were to not vote in favor of this article tonight and be booted out of the program, there's no guarantee that we would be welcomed, accepted back into it. And that is a big concern of mine as the needs at the high school continue to grow. I think it is an important reminder, if we continue along this step, along this process, that by the time the project would be complete, the building would be almost 30 years old. I, the building is, it's a beautiful building and I always appreciate when residents speak to me and say that the building is maybe 10 years old. It is not. We are getting close to 30 years old and there are needs that need to be addressed. I am in full support of this. I think it's very important for us to stay within the MSBA process and also do the work that is needed to understand what the project will look like because we do not fully have that figure yet. That would be the work of the building committee. And ultimately, it would be a question of the voters if it continues to move through the process positively, which I think that is something that town meeting members in this room value, is that community feedback and that community engagement. And that is why I am in full support of this article and hope that my fellow town meeting members join me in voting yes.
Ms. Cass Avant.
Town meeting members, I did want to just clarify my position on this article. I just wanted to take a couple minutes to just walk back where my thinking started. So I moved to Shrewsbury 16 years ago and I moved here for the schools. And my first involvement with anything related to the schools was with the Sherwood Campaign. And then class sizes ballooned and my husband said, "Maybe we should find a different town." And I said, "No, I'd rather stay and I'd rather work on the solution." And that led me to involvement with the 2014 override. From there, I worked on the campaign for the new Beal School, the 2021 override. I've also worked on the library expansion program, project, and the police station. I am committed and dedicated to making sure that our town has not only the capital improvement projects, but also the resources that we need in order to provide the services that everyone here expects, not only from our schools, but from our municipal departments as well. When we first voted to send the statement of interest to the MSBA, my answer was yes. We were declined. When the question came up again, my answer was no. And the reason for that was because I felt we were just too close to a much-needed operational override that is part of our financial management plan to be able to continue to provide services to the community at the levels that we committed to in 2021. I think when we look at how the Select Board voted, you can't just point to someone's vote and decide by that that they may be in support of the schools or not. One thing I think we all have in common is our commitment to quality services in this community and our understanding that our schools are what make us an amazing community. Having hesitancy around moving forward with this article and forming a building committee is not about whether or not you support the schools, it's whether or not you're willing to make that commitment tonight, but also the commitment to the next operational override. I mean, that's what we're going to be talking about in the coming years, right? And if we're going to move forward and we're going to say yes this evening, and it does seem that people have an appetite to say yes and they do want to see, you know, what are the costs, what does it look like, what is the plan? And I support that 100%. But I think we also have to acknowledge that there are competing needs in the community and that if we're all in on this, we need to be all in on making sure that we have the funding that we need, that when this school, if it gets over the finish line and it opens, that we're just as committed to making sure that the resources are there to operate. And so my hesitancy is more about making sure that we have the resources we need to operate today and in the future than it is about this one article and whether or not I see value in a high school expansion or renovation. Is there crowding at the high school? Absolutely. Do we need to do something about it? Absolutely. But I think we also just need to recognize that there are other things we need to do as well and other conversations that we need to have as well as a community to make sure that we position ourselves to be able to provide that world-class education that everyone is asking for. Thank you.
The gentleman has asked if there's further comments, anyone from the board remaining who might want to speak. Ms. Conlon.
Thank you. Michelle Conlon, Precinct 10, and member of the Select Board. I don't have prepared comments tonight, so I'm going to, I'm going to do my best here. But I voted in favor of moving this forward three times at this point. So we initially sent that first request. Over a year ago, we were denied from entering the MSBA process. We resubmitted earlier this year and we were accepted into the process. If we vote no tonight, we will lose the opportunity to understand what we need in our high school, what it would look like for our community, and what it may cost our community. And we will remove that choice of our town meeting members and we will remove that choice from the members of our public who will vote to determine if they want to see our high school expanded in a few years. I have three children. They're 13, 11, and 8. My oldest two will probably never step foot in the new expansion of the high school. My eight-year-old, who's in second grade right now, may end up attending the new addition of the high school. That's how far out we're looking at this project. We did, we had a workshop over a year and a half ago at this point where we whiteboarded a long series of about 30-year timeline of what our community is going to need, our operating needs, our capital needs, and what our declining debt service looks like. So that we could stop responding to our building needs when there are emergencies. Our community, it's a wonderful community. I appreciate the decisions that were made over the course of decades that allowed my family to be able to afford to move to this town. We are another family that chose to move here in large part because of our schools. And so I appreciate the decisions that were made over time, but we ended up in a situation where we built schools that were too small, we just did the absolute bare minimum that we could for our community. And we find ourselves here in 2025 with deferred maintenance, deferred investment in our community, and our schools and our public buildings and our public services suffer because of that. Nobody wants to pay more taxes, myself included, but I also want to live in a community that values what our government can provide people and can help people, help our students, help our seniors, help our public service, all move forward to be the kind of community that we all want to live in. I think if we vote no this evening, we will be looking at a 30-year-old building with systems that need to be replaced. Our population realistically is never going to get smaller and nothing ever gets less expensive than it is today. In my 42 years of life, nothing has ever gotten cheaper. And if we delay this, we are going to remove ourselves from the opportunity to have the state pay over 50% of the cost of building and expansion and renovation of this school. And if we vote no today, we may never be invited back into that program again to expand our high school, which means that if we get to a critical point where we no longer have the choice of whether or not we want to do this, we will be 100% responsible for footing that bill. So we will lose all that sales tax that each and every one of us pay every single day that goes to the state, none of that will come to us, and we will be 100% responsible for that. So I urge all of you, we will always have competing needs, competing priorities, but I urge everybody to please vote yes because we will never, we may never be given this opportunity again.
Would you care to speak, sir?
Yes. Thank you. I just want to echo-
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, sure. Greg Richards, Precinct 4. I do want to echo what my colleague stated, and I think for me, the reason why in the discussions I was against the committee was I just want to make sure that we are listening to the community as a whole. And if you go back in time and you think about what has transpired over the last, say, six months, we had a town-wide vote in February where 61% of the community voted against a plan that was put forth by this body. We had a vote on May 6th about a DPW project where this body had put forth to the community at large that was voted against. And we just want to make sure, I talked to a lot of people during the campaign process, a lot of people in the community, and I just think, I want to be cognizant that we're not treating this body as somewhat of an echo chamber where we're listening to those in here may have a different opinion of what, let's say, the community at large has. And I think before we move forward and start talking about additional design funds in the fall, do we fully understand what the entire community is looking for when it comes to development projects, whether it was the DPW building or the school? Like my colleagues, I totally support the schools. You know, I, we came here because of the school system, we fully support the schools. What it really is, is about putting forth a plan where we are going to get a yes, because I think it's really important for us to really understand and hear everyone out there so that those concerns about those, whether it's the cost, tax impacts, and all those things are addressed, because I don't want the perception to be, "You're not listening to us. We've told you twice in the last six months we're against these projects and we don't want that to happen again." So for me, it's more of a pause until we fully understand some of those questions before we just move forward. Because yes, I understand that there is a process to go back through the MSBA process. It does not mean that we're not going to be accepted again in the future. Yes, that does delay things, but we also want to make sure that we are listening and taking everybody's voice into those considerations before we move forward on these. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference, Article 32.
Martha Deering, Precinct 4. I may have a perspective here that's a little different than a lot of people here because I grew up in this town. My first school was the Patton School, and at that time, I believe there was only one other elementary school in town, and that was Coolidge. Those two schools are still operating, but there's a whole bunch of others right now because we needed them. And those things have drawn more people here. I graduated from this building in high school in 1967. At that time, it was the junior/senior high school. And guess what? We have two junior high schools now, and we also have a senior high school. And they are overcrowded. There is no question. I've done a lot of volunteer work throughout the schools. I started working as a volunteer in the music and theater department, I don't know, probably 25 years ago. At that time, when a show is going on, they could invite the entire student body into the auditorium to see a preview, to jump up support, to get more people to come. I stopped doing that about, when my daughter took over, it was probably about eight years ago now. At that time, we had stopped, I guess five years before, doing the presentations for the school because we couldn't even fit a third of the students into the auditorium at that time. I'm still doing volunteer work with the schools. I do the lunch and learn program. They have 20 minutes for lunch and they start just before 11 o'clock. And by the time those kids get to go through the line and get their lunch, they might be able to sit and talk with me for 10 minutes. And then they've got to go off and go again. The place is outrageously overcrowded. The heating and, and air conditioning systems, well, some of the air conditioning is non-existent in that building. It doesn't exist, never did. But the heating, when my daughter was in school there, there were days where she had to bring a coat into some classrooms because they were so cold and then hang it up someplace else because- else because it was too warm. That building needs work, and it needs expansion. Over the years, over the years, we have always done what needed to do. If we are worried of what might happen in four years or five years, we will never go ahead with anything. This system, I mean, I noticed it the other night. People are terrified of change. We need change. There's change that happens every day. We need, we need this plan. I hope you all vote for it, because we don't know exactly what we're going to need when this thing finishes. But if we don't do it, we will never know.
Article 32. Is there any member of town meeting who has yet to speak this evening? Ms. Fritz?
Sandra Fritz, Precinct 9, and I'm also on the school committee. I was a member of the Build Building Committee for many years, and to Mr. Costello's question, the MSBA came into being around 2004 after the Newton North High School was built. It was a former project, and that was, they called it the Taj Mahal. It was a very expensive building, and the state said, we can no longer spend this much to build our schools. MSBA process came in, the check and balances and the process are, it's very detailed. So when we're looking at a building committee, this is part of the phase that we need to put a building committee forward, and all of those building committee meetings are public. They are all televised. You can see them on replay. So it is a very public process. Anyone in our community can come and have a voice as that goes on, because it's a long, it's a tale. There's many, many years of these. Sherwood, same thing with the MSBA. There were years of working on this. So it is a process, check and balance. If we vote, if we don't vote tonight, we will not be in the pipeline. And as far as pausing, when we paused with the MSBA, 22 out of 47 got in in the last go-around. I personally feel, as we look at all the schools in this state that need to be either refurbished or additions or new, our chances of getting back in if we get out of that pipeline are probably very low. If we get in again, it won't be for years, and as Ms. Conlon said, it will not get cheaper. It's going to get much more expensive. And right now, Boston wants to put in for a large technical school for Boston. That's going to be 300, 400 million of that pot, so there's less money to go around. So as we look at this project from a fiscal responsibility, if we don't at least stay in the pipeline now, we are going to lose the potential of millions of dollars, and anything that we need will have to come to us as taxpayers. So my children are long gone from that school, and I can tell you, the overcrowding is significant. And we have been creative. We have looked at every opportunity before coming and asking to go into the MSBA pipeline. And one of the most creative things that I've seen, large trophy case on the upper level, is now an office. So a trophy case. They put some curtains in, and it's an office. It's been very creative, but we're at the point where we do have to make a decision to move forward, and I hope everyone votes for it tonight. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 32? The gentleman in the front.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Lennon, Precinct 8, and I support this. The, you know, I'm green, right? I've never been in a town meeting member. This is my first time. Last night was my first time. And so I'm looking for ways to proceed, you know, on my own situation. And, and I, you know, I want to point out that the, what do they call it? The Finance Committee is behind this, eight to zero. And that, to me, is, it means something to me, because I need to take direction from somebody. And I figure the guys who know about the dollars are giving this $35,000 a green light. I mean, yesterday, we were talking about a much bigger number in, I guess it was Article 6. And so this is $35,000. To just look into the fact that maybe we need some improvement in our high school. Now, I'm a kid who, I graduated in 77 from probably, at that time, the best public high school in America. And because of, because of a medical issue, I went into the gutter until I dealt with that medical issue at the age of 45. Without a college education, with only a high school education and a lot of life experience, I succeeded, to the point where I can be a homeowner in Shrewsbury and have a couple of condos that I rent out. And I retired. I'm 65. I'm probably the oldest second-grade father in town. My kids, I have twin boys in Patton, you know? And I just want them to have the same opportunities I had. And if, if they're healthy, you know, maybe they'll, they'll succeed sooner than I did. So I think $35,000, to just look into this and stay connected to that other thing you were talking about, which begins with an M, you know, I mean, I've heard speculation that like a new high school would be 100 million. Well, these people are like, you know, possibly going to help with half of that? I mean, I don't think we should, you know, alienate them. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Further comments or questions from Article 32? I'd really like to get someone in who has not spoken this evening.
Lee Abdella, Precinct 6, and I'd like to move the question.
Motion has been made and seconded to move the question regarding Article 32. All those in favor of moving the question shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. We'll now move to a vote on Article 32. All of those in favor of Article 32 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to Article 33, which is the CPA funding series of articles. I draw your attention to a package dated May 8th to the town meeting members from Christopher McGoldrick, Director of Planning and Economic Development, who I believe has joined us in the well. Mr. McGoldrick, Article 33. Oh, hold on. We should move it.
I've moved the printed motion under Article 33.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 33 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. Mizikar, anything or right over to McGoldrick? Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adopted by Town Meeting in 2021 and joined by now 200 other CPA communities in Massachusetts, the Community Preservation Committee, CPC, oversees the implementation and administration of the Community Preservation Act in Shrewsbury. Its primary purposes include developing and updating the community preservation plan, reviewing and recommending CPA projects for consideration at Town Meeting, keeping records and preparing an annual budget, prioritizing projects that align with community needs, engaging the community on topics within their identified focus areas. Article 33 proposes the standard annual appropriation request to allocate CPC revenues into their respective accounts as required by the Massachusetts General Laws 44B. Annual revenues are generated from a local surcharge and state-matching funds allocated from the Department of Revenue's Community Preservation Trust Fund. The 5-10-65 formula is structured to meet the minimum required appropriations while allowing the greatest flexibility in utilizing CPC revenues.
Comments or questions from Town Meeting members with reference to Article 33? Not hearing or seeing anyone in this requiring majority vote. We'll call it. Oh, hold on. I guess there's someone on, who wants to speak? Oh, Mrs. McWilliams. Good evening.
Carol McWilliams, Precinct 1. I was just concerned about the 10% at the bottom of the page. Are we limited to just 10% each year, or is that, could that number ever increase? Because it looks like we're spending 35% of the total every year, and you're taking in about $1 million. I would expect that pot to grow. So at some point, could someone come to you and ask for more than 10%?
Yes. So, so the appropriation that is structured is 10% to each of the designated reserves. Those accounts do grow. So this is just from this FY '26 appropriation, from those local surcharge and the state revenues. So those are structured out 10% to each of those reserve accounts. The remaining 65% goes to the undesignated reserve, which can be used for any of those. So those accounts do grow. By structuring it this way, it allows the flexibility of those funds, the bulk of them being going into the undesignated reserve to be used for any project area.
Very good. Any further questions with reference to Article 33? Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll call the vote on Article 33 a simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it on 33. Article 34.
I move the printed motion under Article 34. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend passage of Article 34 by a vote of seven to one.
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. At the, at the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, members approved funding for the design of Arrowood Playground separate from the Townwide Playground Assessment with specific reference to public support of the project. This project proposal seeks to appropriate $600,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Recreation Reserve and General Budget Reserve for the purpose of replacing the existing outdated playground equipment and installing new safety surfacing at Arrowood Park.
Comments or questions from Town Meeting members? Yes, sir.
V. James, Precinct 4. I noticed the CPC voted nine to zero. Curious to know why the Finance Committee is overwhelmingly voting against this.
Go right ahead, Chair.
Mr. Moderator, in response to the Town Meeting members' query, some information that I'd like to provide that came up during deliberations on this particular article. One of the primary concerns was the overall cost of 600K, which is close to 60% of the entire budget, the yearly revenue of CPC, of the CPA budget for this year. There were concerns related to the number of people who could actually use the park, given that it has just street parking, the size of the park, and the overall size of the investment, which I just mentioned was pretty large. There were also concerns related to usage of CPC funds. The charter of CPC does also include things like affordable housing, and there were suggestions within the committee that even though we understand CPC runs based on projects coming into their committee rather than them defining projects, there was concern that it, these funds could be used for, for more meaningful, more, more important rather than meaningful projects in the community.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 34? Yes.
Lee Abdella, Precinct 6, and I do other things other than move questions. I just wanted to make more of a comment than a question of just saying that I appreciate the Finance Committee's position to be fiscally responsible, but I think a phrase that doesn't get used a lot in this room is about quality of life, and that, you know, one of the points of town government is to ensure the quality of life for its, you know, residents. And I think that when you look at a project like this that was put forward by citizens regarding the quality of life that's open and free to anybody in the area, regardless of their, you know, socioeconomic background, I think that's something that needs to be considered and not just looked at it for dollars and cents. You know, a park is a place where people can gather, you get to know your neighbors there, there's a sense of community, connections are fostered at parks, there's health benefits. But even beyond that, there is data out there that parks actually can be directly linked to economic vitality. They, of town and cities have shown that when they invest in their public spaces, they are more attractive to companies that are looking to relocate, they are more attractive to highly educated and therefore often wealthier citizens who are attracted to move into those towns. So I think that this is something that we should look at beyond just a dollar amount. It's a bigger issue. So I just wanted to say that I'm in support of this.
Further comments or questions? Yes, on the aisle.
Sanam Zaire, Precinct 7. I had a question. Are there any other accessible playgrounds of this kind that have both the safety surfacing and full enclosure on all four sides?
Mr. McGoldrick?
There are not.
So this would be the first of its kind?
Correct. So as part of the townwide assessment that was done, it identified that this surfacing is the most appropriate for many of Shrewsbury's parks.
I think that's something that's actually missing from this presentation, because I think that's extremely important. There are a lot of parents that have children that have different needs, and having a fence on all four sides regardless of the needs of your child is just really helpful, because kids run. And I have not personally seen any other parks like this, and the surface is also really helpful because kids fall. So I'm, I do support this, and I think it's important to have a park like this in your town.
Further comments or questions with reference on the aisle and the outside?
I was just curious, was looking for a little bit more information. What does the $600,000 get us in terms of, besides the fencing and the safe ground? Just in reference maybe to Dean Park, like what size, how many pieces of equipment? A jungle gym, a swing set? You know, like how big, how many people or how many kids could fit in here at any one given time if you, I don't know, full capacity?
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. So the original project design cost was slated at $1 million through the CPC process in coordination with the consultant and Kevin Esposito. The project cost was reduced down to the $600,000, which is before this body this evening. So it is a very slimmed-down design cost from the original proposal in terms of the specific capacity. Do you, I'm not sure those figures.
Further comments or questions with reference to the article? Oh, Mr. Esposito has the answer to the question, and then we'll go right up this aisle.
Hi, I'm Kevin Esposito. I'm the Division Manager for Parks Maintenance Division, and I'm also a certified playground So the playground is split into two sections, ages 2 to 5 and 5 to 12. Those are the standards for playground equipment. I can't really speak for the number, but the picture on the bottom corner is pretty much what we're looking for. The right side is for the smaller children, and the left is larger. We stayed within the footprint of what's there now. And the safety surfacing is a requirement. In Massachusetts, we cannot use loose fill anymore, so we are going over to this, port and place rubber, which I did have a question during the week about the carbon footprint, which does have a 35 to 50% lower footprint than using wood chips if we were even allowed to.
Satisfied with the response? Very good. Now we had Ms. McManus.
Sandy McManus, Precinct 10. One of the concerns was there was not enough parking on the street. Would, could you include some parking on that site and make this playground a little smaller, and you can put more cars there to park, and more people could use it?
Who can speak to the site? Mr. McGoldrick?
Under this current proposal, there is no parking proposed. I will note that as part of the townwide parking assessment, the majority of survey respondents for this project, there's 240 survey respondents, the vast majority indicated that they walk to this park and do not drive, so there's not a high that they walk to this park and do not drive, so there's not a high demand for parking at this location.
Ms. McKenzie? Next, Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mindy McKenzie, Precinct 1. You mentioned 247 survey respondents. Is that the number of people that actually are in this neighborhood that can use the park?
Sorry, that was 240 survey respondents, and that would be townwide from the survey.
Okay, so approximately how many people use this park? If it's walking only and there's no parking available, it's not really for public use, it's for a neighborhood, correct? It's public, but it's...
It would be open to the public, so townwide, people to use it.
But they would drive and just park in the street? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
I'm just trying to understand, because this park is, if you approve this, then other neighborhoods potentially could come and say, well, look, we can go and get a new one too. So I'm just curious, how many neighborhoods of this nature are there parks that are managed by the, it's managed by the Parks Department?
So the townwide park assessment evaluated 11 park and neighborhood playgrounds as well as eight school playgrounds.
Okay, thank you.
Further, Ms. Conlin.
Michelle Conlin, Precinct 10. I just want to note, I'm very familiar with the Arrowood Drive neighborhood. Arrowood Drive is kind of a long, winding road with a lot of cul-de-sacs, short cul-de-sacs off of it. There are very few houses on Arrowood Drive itself, and while it would be street parking, it is widely available street parking on Arrowood Drive itself. So right now, the playground is not used by many people in the community other than people who live in the neighborhood because it is not, you know, you can see the picture up here, it is not a great playground, it is not a great park. But if we move forward with this proposal, it being one of the only actually citizen-driven proposals that the Community Preservation Committee has received to date, if we move forward with it, it would be a playground that's accessible for all children of all abilities in our community to use and for their parents to be able to have a safe playground for all of their children to come to. And while there's not a parking lot on-site, there is ample street parking where you wouldn't be disturbing, you know, the peace of somebody's home. You wouldn't be parking in front of people's residences.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 34 way up in the middle?
Hi, Kathy Flynn, Precinct 4. I just want to reiterate what Ms. Conlin just said about the parking. Not only is it plentiful, but it's also very safe. The traffic through there is minimal and drives fairly slow. I would feel completely comfortable parking on the street with young children.
Thank you. Further comments or here? Just hand the mic to Yanava.
Hi, Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. I have a question. I actually didn't know this place existed. Does this place currently have a bathroom? And if so, is it ADA compliant? I'm just thinking, like playgrounds I would normally take my kids to when they were younger was I would go to Dean because it has a bathroom and it's fenced in. So I'm also, in addition to wondering if there is bathroom facilities there, have we looked at the cost to maybe just make sure there's the safe flooring at the Dean Park Playground that's already fenced in versus doing all-new building for this one?
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. There are not restroom facilities at this location. Dean Park was included in the townwide park assessment.
Do I see a hand over on the far side? No? Okay. Further comments or questions with this? I'm not hearing or seeing anyone. So, Mr. Gouli.
I, William Gouli, Precinct 8. I would urge people not to vote for this project for several reasons. The first one is all of the reasons presented by the Finance Committee. Thank you, that was very informative. Secondly, it seems to me it's just too much of the money from that pot to spend on one project. And in terms of quality of life, there are two other projects in this budget that would improve Prospect Park and Jordan Pond. So I realize they're not in the same area, but nevertheless, it isn't like we've forgotten about quality of life. We just can make some decisions about where we think we can get the best return for what we're going to be spending. So, and then there are all the questions about parking and how available it actually is to people. Of course, anybody could drive there, but that's not really how things usually work. So, you know, you have to kind of look at the neighborhood around and see if there are enough users of that park to make this a worthwhile investment at this time. So again, I would say let's vote this down and maybe vote up the other things.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 34? I'm not hearing or seeing anyone, so we'll move to a vote on this. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 34 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The noes have it. Article 35? Yes.
Standing vote.
Oh, come on.
We almost got an hour into it. Okay, two hours. So we will move to a standing vote. I will ask the tellers to take a moment to get in position, and then I will ask all those in favor to please stand and remain standing on Article 34. You may be seated. You ready for the noes? And all of those who are opposed, would you please rise and remain standing? You may be seated. Town meeting members, on this matter, we have 86 in the affirmative, 70 in the negative the motion carries. We move on to Article 35.
Motion under Article 35. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 35 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This project proposal seeks to appropriate $6,770 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve account for the purpose of preserving a number of Shrewsbury Mortgage and Index ledger books dating back to 1832, which are in need of repair, rebinding, and mold remediation. Preservation of these records are of both records retention value and historical significance.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 35? Yes.
Hi, Colleen Corbett, Precinct 10. I was just interested, I didn't know we had this information, and I'm wondering where one could find it, and also if, I'm assuming since it's, you know, degrading, that it's being captured, this information somewhere?
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. This information is available in the town clerk's office. You may want to wait until it's remediated to go view it.
Questions or comments regarding 35? Yes, Ms. Hilton.
Is this digitally available? Like if I go and search the, you know, the land deeds? No? Is there any plan to digitize it?
Mr. McGoldrick? Town clerk, do you have plans to put them on digital?
No.
Go into the mic, please.
No, it wouldn't, they wouldn't be digital. There are older records that are permanent, that were required by retention to keep permanently, but they're very moldy, so they need to be, you know, taken care of in order to preserve that history.
Follow-up?
So in my mind, that's why it makes sense to digitize them, right? Because they will continue to degrade, we will preserve them. I assume we're not going to hermetically seal them. So to preserve this information for posterity or however long we need to preserve them, doesn't it make sense to maybe make a digital copy?
Well, that would have to be, you know, a separate, you know, project, you know, requesting funds in order to, in order to do that.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 35? Yes. Oh, Patrick.
Patrick Pitney, Precinct 5.
One moment. I called on the individual in the back.
We're in the same, same line.
Sorry, I should have just go like this.
Hi, Erin Howard, Precinct 1, and I'm a member of the Historical Commission, and we joined with the town clerk in this application to preserve the books. And I wanted to just touch on the digitization question a little bit more. That would have to be, as the town clerk mentioned, a separate request. And then if I remember correctly, and my co-commission member can gale, can correct me, that that is not, that is not allowable use under the historical preservation definition in the Community Preservation Act. So the funds would not be able to come from CPA funds, they would have to come from elsewhere in the town budget.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 35? Mr. Pitney?
Sorry about that, Mr. Moderator. Comment and a question. Number one, I'm in favor of restoring these records. I think it's important for the history of the town. But if we do restore them, how would they be stored and kept going forward so that they don't return to this condition?
Mr. McGoldrick?
So the town clerk's office does have facilities that are, you know, for document preservation. Do you want to go into more detail of some of the specifics?
They're just stored in the, you know, in the town vault. We have, we found these books when we did like a vault cleanout project last year, so that's when, you know, we found that they were, had mold on them. I mean, we have other books going back that same, you know, time period that are in fine condition, but we might eventually look into, there are some archival boxes that they can be stored in.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 35? Not hearing or seeing any. I'll call the vote on Article 35. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it. Article 36?
I move the printed motion under Article 36. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 36 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This project proposal seeks to appropriate $143,000 from the Community Preservation Undesignated Reserve for the purpose of installing ADA-approved ramps and pathways at Prospect Park. The project site is the formal gardens of the formal Matthew and Gertrude Whittleall Estate, also known as the Garden of Sweet Remembrance. The layout and plans were developed as part of a site study done last year in 2024. After accessibility upgrades are complete, the Friends of Prospect Park, who are cosponsor on this project, wish to move forward with the installation of a memorial brick walkway with their own funding.
Thank you. Further comments, questions from town meeting members regarding this article? I'm not hearing or seeing any. Therefore, we'll move to a vote on Article 36. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 37?
The printed motion under Article 37. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 37 by a vote of seven to one.
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This project proposal seeks to appropriate $53,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space and Recreation Reserve account. These funds would provide the 20% local match for a Mass Trails grant request to develop the current schematic design through construction design plans and conduct preliminary site work related to implementing a multi-use trail at Jordan Pond. The project site is a formal, I'm sorry. The, the design, the schematic design of the trail would extend the existing paved pathway along the remainder of the park, which is currently in a more natural state.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 37? Yes.
I think a $2 million price tag to pave up a hiking trail is not worth it, so I would not support this, and I would urge other people not to support this.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 37? Mr. Adler.
Mark Adler, Precinct 1. Can I get clarification on the amount first, please?
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. So the request is for $53,000, which would support a 20% match to the, to the Mass Trails Grant application, so an additional $200,000 from Mass Trails is that request. So what that would do is fund the study, the construction design, which would support future implementation. That $2 million figure is included, that would be the actual implementation cost as estimated by the schematic designs.
Please.
And when would we be, would we be seeing a $2 million proposal, or is that simply an entirely different source of money that doesn't involve this project, this, this source?
So that funding would be, likely be a, you know, fully separate proposal. What we would do is likely break that up into pieces and phases. Part of that would be developing that specific phasing through this construction design process, but that would be an entirely separate proposal. We would likely seek CPC funding support and complement that, like we are doing here with additional grant funding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Mr. Manella.
This is my precinct. It's a very important park that gets a ton of use, fishermen, walkers, dog walkers, and only part of it is even remotely ADA accessible. The rest of it is dirt trail, some of it very steep. And I think it would be great to have this project move forward so that it can be used by everybody. Sometimes us old guys have trouble climbing steep hills, so I'd like to speak in support of it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Very good. Further comments or questions with reference? Mr. Segalnik, and then two up.
John Segalnik, Precinct 2. The $2 million cost, isn't that also... John Segalnick, Precinct 2. The $2 million cost, isn't that also a match of funds that's available through the Mass Trails? So, we wouldn't be paying $2 million?
Correct. We would be seeking funding support through that. Many of the grants that we've looked at for that cap out at 500,000. So, again, we would phase it and piece that out with separate proposals, looking at using CPA funds or other funding sources to provide the local match that many of those grants require. But the $2 million would be the, that's the full project cost as the schematic design proposes. And that figure would be further refined as we go through the construction design phase.
Ed?
Ed Bolter, Precinct 1. What is the annual cost to maintain $2 million worth of, of these trails? And where does that hit the budget?
Mr. Mizikar?
So, it would fall into our parks maintenance budget. I don't have a specific estimate to maintain this particular trail if it comes to fruition. I would expect that we would develop a minimum, minimally, minimal maintenance design, you know, using an asphalt material or something like that. So, I wouldn't think it'd be an extraordinary burden on the budget. But it would require some ongoing maintenance to keep it clear. But I don't have a figure for you this evening.
Did I see a question? Yes, right in the middle.
Hello? Casey Panarelli, Precinct 3. I was just curious, because this is my precinct as well. Are you planning on paving Kingston, those dirt roads that would intersect this path going all the way around Jordan Pond?
Mr. McGoldrick?
So, as part of this proposal, the schematic design does not propose paving any of the roadways. It's only for pedestrian access.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 37? Yes. Okay, on the left first, then the right.
Sorry, I go first. Naveen Jain, Precinct 4. Two-part question. So, it's multi-phase approach. Are we going to, looking, is there already a sense of how much each of those phases would cost that would fall under that $2 million?
So, again, I just want to refocus the conversation a little bit. So, the, the request here is for the $53,000 in a Mass Trails grant that gets us the construction design phase. That will then help us to detail out more specific phasing of the actual implementation. But at this time, it's too early to give those figures.
Follow up?
Follow up, yeah. So, you wouldn't know how many years that would be over time. That would be an outcome as well.
I, I don't have a specific, but I would say probably between three and four years to, to do the full project.
Thank you.
The gentleman to your left.
Cash Jane, Precinct 4. Just wanted to mention, a few members ago, someone mentioned the ADA compliance aspect here. I want to say that in June of 2020, I sent an email to some of the officials in our town asking about that. Because as a visually impaired person, I had been aware, and I'd known other people who had discussed, that a large part of this area was not accessible. Makes it very complicated, very difficult for people to enjoy what is, you know, a great area, our great nature. One of the responses I received, because this was the middle of 2020, was that we didn't have the money to do what we would like to do. If this is something we are now able to look into, this is something that's been an issue for a long time, why not at least take a look?
Right behind you.
Shannon Wall, Precinct 7. I grew up on Jordan Pond before it was paved, and it was barely used. We'd used it as kids, but there wasn't a lot of traffic. It's been really nice to see the volume of people since the portion that has been paved has been leveraged. And it's, it is really important that we have accessible pathways for everyone to enjoy the limited natural spots that we have in town. And while, you know, I do take my kids on the unpaved parts, there are places that are not necessarily safe and easy to access or even get through with young children. So, for people that have a disability or difficulty, it would make a substantial difference.
Further comments or questions on Article 37? Ms. Maycomber?
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. Just a question about standing water, or how we would handle, like, stormwater, I guess, I don't know, with it not being able to dissipate through the ground. I do think we need it to be paved. I know my kids have gone on the trail there on their bikes and stuff, and they love it. But just worried about stormwater and taking care of that so it doesn't get icy or unmanageable.
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. As part of the design of this process and the schematic design, we are looking to include stormwater management. So, this is specifically, will include design elements to treat stormwater prior to going into the lake. So, it'll improve the Jordan Pond water quality as well.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 37? Yes, right in the middle.
Caroline McAdam, Precinct 3. Jordan Pond is right behind my house. I've lived there for over 45 years. And I can't tell you how wonderful it is to see so much action and people there all the time. All age groups, all types of weather. It's always busy, and this would be a real help to have that done for them. Thank you.
Further comments, questions with reference to Article 37? I'm not hearing or seeing any. Therefore, we'll move to a vote. This is a simple majority. Regarding Article 37, all those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to Article 38.
I move the printed motion under Article 38. Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 38 by a vote of eight to zero.
Our town meeting members, I draw your attention to a May 8th letter from Christopher McGold, McGoldrick, reporting that on April 3rd, the planning board held public hearings regarding the changes to zoning and general bylaws associated with the following articles, Article 38, 39, and 42. And then, at the close of the public hearing, the board voted five in favor and zero opposed to recommend approval of Articles 38, 39, and 42. Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, this is a minor adjustment to the language and definition regarding easements and frontage. This proposal seeks to amend the existing definition, lot frontage of, to better protect private property owner rights in instances of public takings, such as in the case of roadway widenings. This would provide that lots that would otherwise be rendered non-conforming are no longer rendered non-conforming by that taking.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 38? Yes, sir, right on the aisle.
It's like, oh, can everyone hear me? Okay. John J. Anant, Precinct 10. Could we get a little more clarification on the definition, please?
Certainly. Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. So, the definition, I'll give a simplified version. It's, it's pretty wordy and there. But the lot frontage of, when defining that, is the horizontal distance along the front lot line between the two side lot lines. So, essentially, your roadway distance in front of your house. In terms of easements, an easement is defined as a right to use or enter onto the real property of another without possessing it.
Follow up?
Okay. Does this article limit the rights of property owners regarding their frontage if there is an easement abutting their property?
Mr. McGoldrick?
So, if there is an easement abutting their property, the, this is not affected. But this protects private property owners in the case of a taking that would otherwise affect the property and render it non-conforming, subject to additional, or potentially subject to additional local review.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 38? Yes, Ms. Maycomber?
Just a quick question. Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. I'm just wondering, who brought this article and why? Like, what was the reasoning? I guess, it is really wordy, and I don't fully understand it. So, I'm just wondering why it was brought, and if it ties into any other, like, zoning activity happening in town, or is this just kind of like run-of-the-mill? Oh, we should just take care of this now.
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. So, this was brought in coordination with the Engineering Department and DPW regarding upcoming roadway widenings and providing protections related to those projects.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 38? Follow up? Yes, sir.
Forgive me for the constant follow-ups. But just to clarify, I think for the rest of us, so, because from what we're generally reading from the article, it's, it kind of indicates that your frontage will be reduced if you have a, an easement involved with your, with your lot. Can you clarify for us how the frontage changes for property owners in Shrewsbury? Thank you.
So, so using the diagram, admittedly, some MS Paint here up on the, the screen here. But the roadway at the top of the screen, if you see this as the lots, that green would be the easement that is acquired for the roadway expansion. The setback, as you can see, is reduced in the case of those takings. And so, if that goes into the setback, the required setback, those single-family homes or whatever property there, the private property, could be rendered non-conforming. This would protect private property owners from that condition.
Further comments or questions with reference to the article? Mr. Segalnick?
John Segalnick, Precinct 2. I, I guess, for clarification, does that mean, once the lot is considered non-conforming, I could still put an addition onto my house at the same distance that the house now resides? Or would, because it's non-conforming, I can't put an addition onto my house?
Mr. McGoldrick?
So, it'd be under the same restrictions as if it was a conforming structure prior to the taking?
So, the answer is yes?
Correct.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 38? Yes, sir, in the middle.
Raju Palapati, Precinct 4. Do we know what roads are being considered to widen right now?
Mr. Mizikar?
Well, there's a general, I don't know if we have any specific roads. Mr. Truman may be able to address that. And as he goes to the mic, I will just say there has been an interest in the community in allowing for more sidewalks, and this would be an integral part to this. And just to underscore what everyone has said, or Mr. McGoldrick has said, this is protecting private property rights. If you don't adopt this, and the roadway is widened, then you'd lose those rights and be subject to further restrictions that exist within the bylaw right now. So, this truly is advocating on behalf of property owners and existing property owners within the community. Mr. Truman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, so, engineering had identified this. We're, we're looking currently at doing sidewalk expansions. And a lot of the existing right of ways in the town are too narrow. So, in order to get a five-foot, five-foot sidewalk in, on most properties, we have to take some takings to get the sidewalk in. So, we identified that this would be an issue if we didn't get this, you know, this relief sought before we started doing the sidewalk improvements.
Does people understand that explanation? Thank you, Andy. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 38? Hold on. Are you a town meeting member, ma'am? No, okay. Any town meeting members who have any further comments or questions? Yes?
One more clarification, please. So, if you look at the bylaw, it says, "which prohibit access to the subject lot or otherwise render such access illusory." I think that is the area that we're looking at. Does that relate to what you're talking about here, or is that different?
Thank you. So, it still relates. What that would do, it would, in cases of easements, whether general access, septic, or drainage easements, where the easement is only illusory and does not actually affect physical access, that would then be allowed. But any physical restriction or physical easement would still not allow that to be considered frontage.
Further comments or questions with regard to Article 38? I'm not hearing or seeing any town meeting members. Yeah, ma'am, are you a resident of Shrewsbury? I couldn't hear you. Very good, then. As is our practice, you may get a microphone and ask a question. Please stand and introduce yourself.
Yeah. Uma Anant, from Precinct 10. I really want to know how this is going to affect our frontage. So, when we bought the property, and we have a lot line defined and, which is attached to the deed, is this going to reduce our frontage because we have an easement?
Mr. McGoldrick?
No. In many cases, this will restore frontage in cases of easements. In regards to a specific property, I'd recommend contacting the Planning Office or Building Department, and we'll be happy to look at your property, any easements on there, and go specifically of how this could affect your property.
Because the, the easement is part of our property.
Understood. And this, again, this is providing additional protection. So, in any case, this is going to improve your rights to your property. But I'm, I'm happy to go through your specific easement and those particulars.
We just want to make sure it's not going to reduce our property value.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 38? I'm not hearing or seeing any. This requires a two-thirds majority. You heard the recommendation of the planning board. All those in favor of Article 38 shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no? The ayes have it. We will now move to Article 39.
I move the printed motion under Article 39. Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 39 by a vote of eight to zero.
You heard as well, town meeting members, the recommendation of the planning board in favor. Mr. McGoldrick, are you handling this one?
Yes, thank you.
Article 39?
So, this article proposes to update the local zoning bylaw in accordance with the provisions of Section 7 and 8 of Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024 and associated guidelines published by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which provides for accessory dwelling units to be constructed in all districts which allow single-family residential development. This proposal will remove the existing local accessory dwelling units regulations to a new section with amendments to meet state requirements, allowing the community to apply these regulatory protections to all new accessory dwelling unit construction.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 39? Yes, along the outside.
Carissa Ford, Precinct 3. Sorry if I'm just stupid. So, under number one, it says, "the ADU shall not exceed 40% of the gross floor area of the principal single-family structure," or 900 square feet, whichever is less. But then, number four B says, "shall not exceed the lesser of 50% or 900 square feet." And so, I'm wondering if these are talking about two different things that we're measuring here, or if it's supposed to be the same percentage?
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. There are separate sections. One is from the prior, our existing bylaw, 40% in bold is the, the new language. In either case, the state legislation requires 50% or 900 square feet, whichever is less.
Okay. So, are we getting rid of number one and adding number four?
The requirement would be 50% or 900 square feet, whichever is less in all cases.
Further comments or questions with reference? Mr. Kirk?
Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. Nowadays, there's a movement towards what are called tiny houses, which are basically sort of like two-story garden sheds with a kitchen and something that pretends to be a bathroom. And I'm just wondering, and sometimes they're on trailers. Anyway, would this change allow tiny houses?
Mr. McGoldrick?
Ms. Sheen?
Oh, Building Inspector, good evening.
So tiny houses is a term that is in the building code and will be allowed in our new building code as of July 1st. Tiny houses will have a maximum square footage of 400 square feet, and tiny houses will be allowed to be defined as an accessory dwelling unit. Tiny houses will have to be on some sort of foundation per the building code.
Okay. Further comments or questions with reference up along the aisle? Let's see. Yes?
San Amzaire, Precinct 7. I just wanted to highlight that the intent of changing our local accessory dwelling units was to encourage the building of affordable housing across the state. So I have two questions. One, on number four D says that there will not be more than one driveway, and I was wondering if you can explain the logic of that, because it feels inconsistent with the spirit of this legislation. And my second question is whether the town has considered incentivizing the creation of accessory dwelling units that can be labeled as affordable housing.
McGoldrick?
Thank you. So the state legislation largely encourages the development of accessory dwelling units. What we're proposing with this is to take the existing language in our bylaw, which included that half-circle and driveway provision, and move that to a new section. So being town-wide, in alignment with the state legislative language. So restriction of driveways was not, you know, was left to local preference, and it existed in our bylaw for accessory dwelling units. So we're proposing to keep that language at this point.
Follow-up?
Follow-up, yeah. Can you, can you explain your logic about that, and if you feel like that is consistent with the spirit of creating more affordable housing? And also, can you speak to whether or not the town has talked about incentivizing the creation of affordable housing through accessory dwelling units?
Yeah, so the, the logic, I think, behind keeping that in is it's, it's existing language in our bylaw and how we currently regulate accessory dwelling units. We're proposing no change to that. We are seeking, and we're awarded DLTA funding to see a more comprehensive review of accessory dwelling units regulations, and we'll be evaluating that, that more deeply with the community. But at this stage, we're looking to just move the existing language to a new section.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions? Yes, on the aisle.
Brian Costello, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, I've provided with you a motion, and I make a motion to amend the zoning bylaw that we're discussing. And I would like to insert a new subsection, which I'll read as follows.
I think, Brian, in order to ensure all of your colleagues understand what you're proposing?
Yeah.
Please read the entire, in its entirety.
Okay.
So everyone understands your, the specifics, and then if you could, I think, summarize with a crisp summary, it'll bring it together for folks.
All right, thank you. Short, my proposal is a short-term rental prohibition in residential zones. So there's a prohibited use that I'm suggesting, which is, in all residential zoning districts, accessory dwelling units, whether attached or detached, shall not be used, rented leased, or otherwise occupied, as a short-term rental defined as any rental period less than 30-day consecutive days. This is per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 64, G, Subsection 14. The applicability, the prohibition applies to all ADUs approved under this law regardless of the date of construction or occupancy. The purpose this restriction is enacted to ensure that ADUs fulfill their intended function of increasing access to long-term residential housing and not for transient commercial or vacation rental use. Enforcement would be, this section will be enforced by the building inspector and/or the zoning enforcement officer. The purpose of this is primarily, a number of towns, it's, it's allowed under the law, have said, we do not, we support ADUs, which I do. We support ADUs, but we do not support short-term rentals, especially in residential areas, which are basically side yards and people's backyards. And that's it.
So the motion has been made to amend Article 39. Is there a second? There is a second. Is there discussion on the gentleman's proposed amendment on Article 39? Mr. Adler?
Hello, good evening. Mark Adler, Precinct 1. In 2019, the house next door to me was sold, and the folks who bought it, who live in Shrewsbury, turned it into an Airbnb. And it's been the greatest, they've been the greatest neighbors I've ever had. There's no barking dogs, there's no kids using the schools, the, they're rarely there because it's not fully leased. For some reason, the people really love the basketball hoop, I can't figure that part out. And the folks on the other side of town who own it, I've never met, but they've kept it up very well, and everyone's been happy. And I know that Airbnbs get a bad name. I'm not thrilled about them in principle, but I can tell you, in practice, they're great. And I've never stayed in one, no, wait, I did stay in one like six years ago on a vacation for a day because we had a hotel problem. But I don't like the idea of banning people's use of their property, because that's what this is. And if people want to use it for renting it out, as long as it's fitting the neighborhood, that's fine.
Can I address?
Would the proponent care to respond?
Yeah. This does not ban short-term rentals in anything other than ADU. You can short-term rental your house if it's required, I mean, if it's allowed in the town, which I think it is. You can short-term rental anything else. This is specifically on these very smaller units in people's side yards and backyards. And don't forget, we can't build them in a front yard. So this, that's primarily it. We're not trying to stop people from having their home as an Airbnb or anything like that. It's this specific use. Where we might have so many of these, I think in a residential area, you could cause problems.
Ms. Hilton?
Hi, Bridget Hilton, Precinct 7. Shrewsbury's not a vacation destination, really. I mean, people, it's a lovely town. People love to come here, but it's not like we're, I don't know, West Palm Beach or something. The people that are using short-term rentals in town, by and large, are people seeking treatment at UMass, people visiting family from out of town, people who are dropping their kids off at colleges in Worcester, people who might benefit from the use of a short-term rental for those purposes. I, I mean, maybe people come here to vacation. We have good apple picking, I guess. I don't know. The other thing is, is that I've stayed in actually an accessory dwelling unit Airbnb before, and I, I think I was also a pretty good neighbor in those circumstances. It was a young family that was trying to be able to afford their house in the town that they lived in, and this was giving them an opportunity to be able to do that, to afford the increasing cost of living in a town like Shrewsbury, and sending your kids to a town where we're going to need new schools, believe it or not, in a couple of years. And so being able to afford that, to be able to do that. I, I don't anticipate, and I think it's, it's almost a little bit of fear-mongering, that every single ADU that comes into this town is going to turn into an Airbnb, and you're going to be flooded with strangers in your neighborhoods every day, and who knows where they're coming from and what they're doing. I think that's a little alarmist. I think we have to let this law go into effect, see what happens, and maybe we'll come back in a couple of years and be like, you know what? That guy was right. We gotta shut down all those Airbnbs. But we don't know, and I think it's a little restrictive to limit what people can do with their properties before we've even allowed them to do this with their properties.
Further comments or questions with the gentle respect?
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Short-term rentals, by their very nature, are more expensive than long-term rentals per day. They're actually extremely expensive. So people that want to bring their kids into the school district, we're not going to use a short-term rental if they can't afford it. It's, it's extremely expensive on a per-day basis. In addition, while we are all phenomenal guests at our Airbnbs, no doubt, there are instances in many communities where this is an issue. And what this does is say, look, if you want to have your house as a, as an Airbnb, feel free, but these smaller units, again, where we might see a lot of them, I think it's a protection for your residents. Don't forget, I specifically say residential neighborhoods. So if there are opportunities in commercial neighborhoods or in neighborhoods that are, I think, mixed-use, maybe that's an opportunity. But I stand by that this is a good use. I, I think ADUs is a smart move. I think the short-term rental causes, excuse me, causes a lot of issues with the town.
Further comments or questions with reference to the gentleman's amendment? Mr. Pitney?
Patrick Pitney, Precinct 5. I'd like to get an opinion from town council on this amendment, and also a recommendation from the finance committee.
We discussed it earlier, and the amendment is fine.
Very good. Finance committee?
Finance Committee?
Didn't get a chance to discuss this. We'll have to take a recess to do that.
I couldn't hear you.
We haven't discussed this. We, this is the first time we're hearing it.
Oh, you didn't do it beforehand?
No, we were hearing it for the, the amendment for the first time.
Okay, just checking. So do you want them to take five minutes and do this, or does it?
No.
No, okay, very good. Further comments or questions on the gentleman's amendment? Yes?
Barb Trudell, Precinct 7. I understand your concerns, but I'm a little bit confused as to who you would prefer not to use those accessory dwellings, because to Ms. Hilton's point, the people who were using the income of the short-term rental were the primary owners, not the renters. So, so you are correct that people who wanted to bring their children into school here wouldn't be using the accessory dwellings. It was the primary owners who were renting out the accessory dwelling units and using that income to make sure that they can continue to afford living in a town that they might not otherwise afford. So I'm, I guess my question to you is, what, what is the population that you're primarily concerned about using ADUs in an inappropriate manner under a verbo or an Airbnb?
Yeah, so, ooh, that's loud.
The proponent.
Thank you. If you read the legislative history and the, the text of the ADU law, it's primarily to increase long-term housing. That's literally in the, in the, in the agreements. It's to increase long-term housing. And so the goal is to say, look, what we want and what we want to encourage is inexpensive, affordable places to live, either for your family or extended family, or in this case, we can rent it to anybody. There's not a restriction on obviously family members. So that's going to give a lot more income and a lot more steady income to people. I think it also does protect against, to be quite frank, I would say some speculation, right? I think we are worried about folks coming into town, not living here, and speculating by building more ADUs, which, while there are some that are very good at probably property management, there are some that might not be. But I think the key part is, this is a, meant to be a long-term rental law. That's what, that's what it was intended for, inexpensive, long-term rental. And so this protects, I think, the intent of the law.
Further comments or questions with reference to the gentleman's proposed amendment? Yes, up along the aisle.
Tony Bonaventura, Precinct 4. I actually think this is a really good amendment. It's kind of a walk-before-we-run mentality can easily be changed down the line. We don't, this is something that, it's, it's a new concept to our area. We'll see what happens over the next few years. And people can still, you know, rent for one month, so they can rent it for just one month if they choose. I, I think the intent here is to, you know, try to keep the, an idea of like a hotel concept out of a lot of residential areas. And you don't know where or why those might pop up. So, you know, let's see what happens with this over the next few years. People find opportunities to do certain things. We don't know what they are until the law's out there and it's going as, as a, a different means of providing housing. So I think it's a good step to start with this. You know, this little bit of limit, you're still expanding your property rights by the law itself, so I don't see a harm in that. Thanks.
Further comments? Yes, Ms. Conlon?
Well, I, Michelle Conlon, Precinct 10. I appreciate the, the sentiment behind this amendment, but I think it is, is a fairly major change to the article that we're looking at here. And I feel like this should be something that goes through the full process, that all of our zoning changes go through, and potentially be brought back in the fall.
A response from the proponent?
Yeah, the purpose of town meeting is to go through these, and we can't offer amendments. So I don't think it's really, it's specifically within this article.
Ms. Conlon?
Thank you. If, I, I think, you know, this is the first I'm hearing of it as a select board member, and our finance committee has not heard at, yet at this point. And it was the desire of this board for the finance committee to not take a break to deliberate on this. I think it would be appropriate for us to have the appropriate amount of time to digest a change like this in a planning, a planning article.
Further comments or questions? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step on you, Michelle.
No, it's okay.
Further comments or questions with reference to the gentleman's proposed amendment? Yes, in the middle.
Shannon Wall, Precinct 7. I'm curious if there's any data or other towns to substantiate the concern that's being raised?
I can answer that? No, because ADU law is just recently promulgated. So most of these laws are just starting in Massachusetts, and so you don't see a lot of, there are towns in Massachusetts that have specifically not allowed short-term rentals, but the building of ADUs, this law was literally just passed. So I can't give you the answer to that. Yeah. More broadly? No, a lot of states don't really, this is a really novel concept, to be quite frank. You know, ADUs is something that's been discussed across the country. There aren't a lot of states that actually have this in place. It's a great idea, by the way. I'm 100% think it's a wonderful idea, but it is very novel. And I think, maybe to Tony's point, because of that, I'd rather, I would walk slower. Maybe at another point, we can say, hey, you know what? This thing's growing great. Maybe there's a, maybe there's a, an application process. For instance, a lot of towns don't have short-term rentals at all. They don't allow Airbnbs or anything, right? You have to go before the town to get a permit, and so on and so forth. Maybe we go to that route at some point, where we say, you know, let's try it. But I think that where this is so new and novel, let's go with the intent of the law, which is long-term rentals, and get people to get this income, which they prob, a lot of people need. Get people into the town that can afford to be into the town, which they need. We want people to stay here. And I think that's really something that I'm a big advocate for. I want people to come, and I want people to go to the school system. What I don't want is sort of that risk of something else that could happen, to be quite frank.
Dennis?
Dennis O'Connell, Precinct 7. I know you didn't want us to talk in the finance committee, but I do have a question. What happens if we don't put this in, we allow the rentals, the short-term rentals? Can we restrict it later? Or do the people that already have used it and rented it, do they have the right to keep renting?
Mr. McGoldrick?
So we could put the restrictions in later. It would apply to any new ADUs. The others would be grandfathered.
Follow-up?
Okay, that's, so I, from that perspective, I think we, if we think we are going to ever need this, we'd want to do it now. Otherwise, you know, we've let the cat out of the bag, and it goes through. I'm not super concerned about short-term rentals, but other people may be. And it sounds like we should do it now, otherwise we can't really undo it.
Further comments or questions with reference to the gentleman's proposed amendment on Article 39? Yes?
Hi, San Amzaire, Precinct 7. I just wanted to say that I agree with the sentiment of what you're saying, but I'd prefer going the route of incentivizing the creation of affordable housing, rather than restricting what property owners can do with their property. And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Cassavan?
Cassavan, Precinct 8. Question about registering short-term rentals. Question about registering short-term rentals. I believe they have to be registered, and then we would know which rentals were being used that way, and we would have a better understanding of where these rentals were. Whereas if we were to ban this outright, we would not have an understanding if people were using them as short-term rentals unauthorized. Could you expand on that, Mr. McGoldrick?
Or the building inspector? Who's in a better position to do so?
Patty Sheehan, the building inspector. So this is becoming, so short-term rentals are registered with the state, and not necessarily each municipality. However, again, with our new building code going into effect July 1st, existing short-term rentals in Shrewsbury are going to have to be identified and subject to annual inspections. So that's different, that is existing short-term rentals. So if an ADU becomes a short-term rental, it also will have to follow that same requirement as to identify itself as a short-term rental and put on our list for annual inspections.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to the gentleman's proposed amendment to Article 39? Ed?
So if, you know, the answer to the-
Please identify us.
Oh, Ed Bolter, Precinct 1. So if the answer is, you know, what could go wrong is, and then we start having examples. So if my neighbor puts in an ADU, and they're renting out to short-term people who are, you know, not fitting in, loud, you know, whatever, whatever, you know, is not comporting with the nature of the neighborhood, what's the process? You know, is that like a phone call? Who do I, who would I call? The building inspector?
It looks like it. She's running to the mic.
Apparently.
So I'm also the zoning enforcement officer. So short-term rentals, right, will have to comply with the definition of short-term rentals as to how the owner and occupants are using it. Noise issues could be the zoning bylaw, and it could be also something that we would ask the police department to help us with.
Okay. And is there a process where you would have to review whether that could still be a short-term rental, if there's chronic abuse?
No, it would be just enforcement of the owner using it the appropriate way. We wouldn't take away the right, because it is an ADU that would be allowed to be a short-term rental.
Hmm, okay.
Ms. Hilton?
Bridget Hilton, Precinct 7. It sounds to me that there's a lot of concern about short-term rentals in the room. And so what I think maybe would be a better solution to this is to have a separate article addressing short-term rentals in town, how we look at them, what Patty can do when I call on my neighbors, and all that good stuff, so that we have guidelines for anyone who may be interested in doing a short-term rental. Because as the gentleman said, you could still short-term rental your house, so you're getting the same people regardless, kind of in-town in these spaces. And so maybe we need some guardrails on how short-term rentals are managed. I just don't think we should shoehorn it into this particular article.
Further comments or que, Mr. Molina?
Jason Molina, Precinct 1. So the amendment is an allowable amendment that the state has provided, right, as an avenue. It's been blessed by council to make sure that it is allowable. Clearly, the legislature decided that this is an opportunity for towns to adopt this, so it's not, it's not something out of the ordinary. So it's just exercising the ability, the proposal is to exercise the ability that a town can impose on these ADUs. I go with Dennis on this, you know, from Finance Committee, as a town meeting member commenting, that, you know, once you let the cat out of the bag, it's going to be problematic, right? I would rather that you have the restriction first on what you can affect now, which is the ADU. You can't affect the short-term rentals on a full house. That's not what we discussed tonight. ADU. ADU, do we block it from short-term rental? Yes or no, for this amendment, right? And when you have this perspective of like, well, let's find out how to regulate them and how to deal with nuisances, yeah, exactly. That's why you should have this restriction now, so you don't have to deal with it haphazardly. Have the restriction, figure out how to deal with the ramifications of it, and then if you have the processes in place, then you can consider coming back to this town meeting to lift the restriction. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to the gentleman's proposed amendment? Ms. Deldato?
Deb Deldato, Precinct 8. When you have one of these accessible accessory dwelling units, is there going to be any restrictions on the number of people based on the size that can be in that unit?
The building inspector.
So a family can live in an ADU, and there's no restriction on the size of a family? So if, so there's no restriction on the size of a family? So a family can live in an ADU?
But what if it's not a family?
So an ADU, given this restriction of the size, not greater than 50% of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, is expected to be a one- or two-family dwelling unit. So one or two, one or two bedrooms would be there for availability for occupants.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to the gentleman's? Mr. Adler?
Mark Adler, Precinct 1. Again, I'm a little concerned about the use of private property here and the fear-mongering over these ADUs. If there's a nuisance, we already have a law to deal with that. If I've got a barking dog in my backyard or in my front yard, we already have a way to deal with that. If we have too many people living in the house violating zoning laws, we already have a way of dealing with that. If there's a loud party going on in the middle of the night on a Tuesday, we already have a way of dealing with that. But blaming it on ADU, short-term rentals, I don't understand where the, how that follows and how that's something we need to deal with. And, you know, there are things we don't like, and as we were discussing yesterday, just because we don't like them doesn't mean we need to legislate it away. And this may be, like, I don't like the color of a house, I don't like the plants you put in, but that doesn't mean we need to do something about it. It's just, sometimes our neighbors aren't exactly the way we want them to be. Thank you.
Pat?
Hi, Pat Conry, Precinct 10. It's a complicated issue, something I've had plenty of time to think about over the years. The shortage of housing throughout the Commonwealth and other places in the country, too, is making housing unaffordable, has already made housing unaffordable for most young people. And that, clearly, that's why the Commonwealth pushed this forward. If people really were to think about the impact that this has on Shrewsbury and the ability to, I don't know, grow our town's population by about 60% over the next 10 years, I don't know if anyone's thought about that, but, but that's what, that's what the concept is, is to make housing exist, and then by market forces, have a suppressive effect on cost of housing. That's what ADUs are all about. I typically don't like to restrict private property rights. And the amendment offered is a restriction, you know, it's, we'll call it what it is. We're trying to restrict the owner's ability to use their property in the most profitable way. Like I said, I typically don't like those kind of things. But in the context of this ADU legislation from the Commonwealth, which is put upon us, I mean, honestly, I've lived in Shrewsbury for a while. I know people in Shrewsbury would not have come up with this idea by themselves because of the impact on population and town services associated with population. So I think being afraid of people that are going to live in short-term rentals in an ADU, that might be a red herring. I think there is a real issue that people are concerned, can be concerned about, is the presence of short-term rentals dilutes the housing availability aspect of the ADU legislation. And this is something that we see, not here, because people pointed out, Shrewsbury's not a vacation destination, but we have large parts of the Commonwealth where the presence of short-term rentals, not in ADUs, because ADUs are new. The short-term rentals in real people's houses has had a terrible impact on housing availability and has left entire communities in our Commonwealth with no place for the police to live, no place for the teachers to live, no place for the nurses to live. And so this is a real phenomenon, short-term rentals making the housing situation go from worse to really worse. So that's a real concern. I don't think being concerned about people that live in, there are ways to take, there are mechanisms in place to take care of short-term rentals where they're having loud parties every night, or selling drugs, or whatever it is that they're doing. But, so, like, in summary, I'm generally not in favor of restricting personal property rights, but I think, I don't think it hurts anything to, to take this piece of housing availability legislation and maintaining the most bang for the buck, because there is a buck here. You know, this is, this is a population increase bill, and that's going to have a cost to the town. We might as well get the best bang for it, that is, the most availability of housing, to have that most suppressive effect on the cost of housing. So I would, I would reluctantly agree with the amendment to go ahead and take that little hit on personal property rights, and just to, to wring the most benefit we can out of what's been handed to us by the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Along the aisle?
Gail Sokolowski, Precinct 6. I promise, I didn't want to just stand up at this point, but it feels good to stand up. I don't have the knowledge that a lot of the previous speakers have, but as I was sitting here, I came to my own conclusion, like, my town meeting member, Dennis, I don't even know your last name, he, he said, "I think that since this ADU bylaw is brand-new, I would rather see it more restrictive now, because I think it's easier to ease it up later on, and it will give us a chance to let it grow by itself." And that's all I'm going to say. I'm in vote, I'm in favor of this amendment. I just don't know quite what it's going to look like. Is it adding a, under Section 4, is it adding a J after I?
Yeah, it, it adds a section.
Okay.
And the numbers are in the amendment, but, I don't know, it's like Section 7 dot 3 dot 4, but it just adds a section to the bottom, as far as I understand from, maybe council.
Well, you proposed it, here it is.
Yep.
You read it to everyone here.
Yeah.
Before we go to a vote, if we ever do, we will then have a conversation with the town meeting members to make sure everyone is clear on what they would be voting on. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
One cleanup coming.
To the petitioner on the motion to amend, under the definition of prohibited use, or the text, rather, for prohibited use, would you accept after the term, short-term rental, deleting the text that follows and have it read as defined in Chapter 64G of the general laws? I'm not certain the definition you inserted is consistent with that statute, so I'd rather just reference the statute.
Yeah, I did reference the statute per your, so, yeah, I see what you're saying. So let's strike that and just say, per Mass. General Law, Chapter 64G, subsection 14, I think.
Yes, because the statutory language for the definition is different than what you inserted there, of less than 30 consecutive days, so I'd rather just cite the statute and leave it.
So, just so everybody knows, it would say, in, correct me if I'm wrong, "In all residential districts, accessory dwelling units, whether attached or detached, shall not be used, rented, leased, or otherwise occupied as a short-term rental as defined by Mass. General Law, Chapter 64G, subsection 14." Yeah?
I would leave it at 64G.
Okay, 64G.
Thank you.
Now, so that all of your colleagues are clear, please read the next section.
Next section is applicability. This prohibition applies to all ADUs approved under, under this bylaw, regardless of the date of construction or occupancy. C, purpose: This restriction is enacted to ensure ADUs fulfill their intended function of increasing access to long-term residential housing and not for transient, commercial, or vacation rental use. Enforcement is D. This section will be enforced by the building inspector and/or zoning enforcement office.
Thank you. Are all town meeting members clear with the gentleman's proposed amendment under Article 39? Yes?
Yeah, Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. Do we have to amend his amendment now?
No, he's the proponent, he's fine. We're just doing Scriven's work.
He accepted it.
He's accepted it, we're all square.
Okay, okay.
So my question is still out there for the body. Are you, is everyone square in what you're being asked to vote on?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Would anyone care to move to a vote?
Yes.
Okay, we will move to a vote on the gentleman's article, proposed amendment to the Article 39. He has made a motion, it was seconded. All those in favor of the gentleman's proposed amendment to Article 39 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Ooh. I'm calling for the standing vote. We will now move to a standing vote on the gentleman's proposed amendment. Tellers, please take your positions. By the way, folks, this is a majority vote, as is the vote on the underlying article. So would all of those in favor, please rise and remain standing. Let the tellers get everyone. Please remain standing.
18?
15.
13?
22.
You may be seated. All of those opposed, please rise and remain standing.
18. 14.
15.
27.
You may be seated. What do you got? On this matter, 68 in the affirmative, 74 in the negative, the amendment does not pass. Moving back to the underlying Article 39, further comments or questions on Article 39? Mr. Molina?
Jason Molina, Precinct 1. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Precinct 10. Old habits. I have a question about ADUs. Can they be added to non-conforming properties? Non-conforming because they were, they were, you know, built in 1920 or something like that, you know? And so they're not conform by today's standards. Can ADU be added, added to those properties?
Yes, so the addition could be added to a non-conforming property with the caveat, it would be treated just like any other non-conforming property, so it may be subject to special permit or other provisions for that addition.
Thanks, sir.
Are you all squared? Okay, anybody else who would like to, go ahead, Krista?
Thank you. Krista Dupree, Precinct 1. I have a couple clarifying questions, if I may, Mr. Moderator, and then a couple more specific questions, Chris? Thank you. On the first page, page 59, my apologies, I did not see the review of this, but I'm curious to know why the section of "Not more than one such unit shall exist on any lot" was stricken.
So that was, sorry, so that provision was stricken and replaced, that it would be a special permit use. So the state legislature, or the EOGLC guidelines, rather, switched from, it was originally, towns may permit a second, and the final guideline said that they shall permit a second by special permit. So that was established, that the planning board will be the special permit authority, in alignment with the state and UAW. obviously for an additional ADU. So that means there could be more than one ADU on a lot by a special permit. So my question is, what would be the criteria for the planning board to permit a second ADU? And are butters notified if any ADU is built on a lot? And if a special permit is not granted by the planning board, does that property owner then have the right to go to the ZBA to then go through that process?
So, I'm going to try to take that in three parts. So the, the special permit from the ZBA, or, sorry, from the planning board, the criteria is outlined, I'm not going to go through each of those, but it is the most robust discretion to a local authority to say no to a project. The butters are notified for the proposal, so prior to the construction of a ADU, so simply by proposing that second ADU would trigger the butter notices for that public hearing process, for the issuance of a special permit. And if denied, the property owner does have the authority to appeal within 20 days of that denial, but that would go to land court.
Mr. Moderator, one more, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So in letter E, I guess I'm looking for clarification. A minimum of one parking space shall be provided for the accessory dwelling unit unless it is within a half mile of a transit, transit station. So what if there is more than one ADU? Do you need more than one parking spot that is going to be designated? So yes?
Yes, it would be one parking space for each accessory dwelling unit, with that exception, that is coming from the state legislature in regards to transit stations.
From the state, okay, thank you. My last question, if I may, Mr. Moderator. How many of the residential lots in town, any residential lot can have it, correct?
Any lot that allows for a single-family home.
Right, meaning that they have to meet the criteria of the setbacks?
Correct.
Have we determined how many lots there actually are that would meet this criteria? Thank you.
So we don't have a specific number. We have been doing some preliminary analysis. Obviously, there's approximately 14,000 single-family residents in home, but from our preliminary analysis, a majority of those parcels and the residences would not be allowed to maximize up to that 900 square feet. The vast majority of them are under that maximum square footage, so they would be smaller units. And then what we haven't been able to dig into, and we are evaluating, is looking at site constraints such as topography and other considerations, wetlands on property. Primarily, most of our, you know, Shrewsbury residences and neighborhoods are larger houses and smaller lots, so there's not a lot of room to play with on most properties. So with all of those restrictions, there's not a significant amount that I think would be, you know, an influx of new development of accessory dwelling units without those challenges. In addition, there are the challenges to be overcome that many of these would face, you know, building code restrictions and fire code restrictions, which add additional challenges, so really limits the number of lots that these are feasible on.
Further comments or questions with reference? Up back on the yellow, please.
Kristi Martino Richards, Precinct 4. Just a clarifying question, with regards to the first ADU, butters, are they notified? Because it's as of right?
As of right, so butters would not be notified.
Okay.
Town meeting members, I'd like to just take a quick moment and note that during the discussion this evening, it was discovered that we need to make a technical amendment. So I'd like to offer this moment for Mr. Misakar to apprise you of it and seek your support for it. Mr. Misakar.
All credit goes to Ms. Ford, with her keen eye and wisdom. With her first comment, we do need to strike the word 40 within Section 1. So where it says, three lines from the end of that first paragraph, "ADU shall not exceed 40 percent," it shall say, strike the word 40, or the numeral's 40, and insert 50. So it says, "The ADU should not exceed 50 percent of the gross floor area."
Is every member of town meeting clear with that? I will then ask the chair of the select board to move it and to receive a second.
Move the amended motion.
Second.
Okay, so can we just deal with this, folks? All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. That's done. Further comments or questions on Article 39? Ms. McWilliams?
Carol McWilliams, Precinct 1. I would feel remiss if I didn't get up to tell you how, the more we've discussed this, the more nervous I've become about what we're doing to our town. When you, when I look at those, those pictures, and we can start adding little buildings on, on property that, right now, we don't have acre zoning, I, I think about my daughter, she came here in fifth grade, and when she drives through town now and sees what we've done to this town, it bothers her. Coffee shop talk, in the morning, we talk about this all the time. This whole thing really frightens me. I, I mean, I know you can't see into the future, maybe it'll all work out perfectly, but I just don't agree with the spacing and what we're doing to people's properties. So I just wanted to make that comment. And I'm sorry that the amendment didn't pass, because at least that would be some way of protecting something. I think the state has way too much control over what we're allowed to do.
The gentleman up back? Yes, you. Dave Starg, sorry, Precinct 2, I moved the question. A motion has been made to move Article 39 and second it. We will now move to that immediate question. All those in favor of moving the question shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We'll now go to the underlying and amended Article 39. You have the recommendation of the planning board. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Of course, let's do a standing vote. Do we have seven people? Do we have seven people? I haven't seen seven people. Okay, we got seven people. Tellers, please take your positions. Are the tellers in position? Okay, all of those in favor of Article 39, would you please rise and remain standing?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-four.
Forty-two.
Thirty-four.
You may be seated. Would all those opposed, please rise and remain standing?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-four.
Forty-two.
You may be seated. Would all those opposed, please rise and remain standing? Please remain standing.
One.
Two.
You all set, they can sit. On this matter, 128 in the affirmative, 14 in the negative, Article 39 passes. Article 40.
I move the motion under Article 40, second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends this eight to zero.
Could you speak that again, Jim?
Finance Committee recommends this motion eight to zero.
Is there a proponent wishing to speak on Article 40? Mr. Misakar?
This article seeks to amend the general bylaws regarding procedure at how town meeting votes are conducted. Currently, the first vote at town meeting is required to be done by a voice vote. The proposed amendment allows for the electronic, allows for the use of electronic voting devices in lieu of the voice vote.
Questions or comments with reference to Article 40, over on the aisle?
Carissa Ford, Precinct 3. Mr. Moderator, am I allowed to make a motion to change the language in this printed article?
You should have it written down, so that we have it at the desk.
Okay.
And everyone knows exactly what they're voting on.
Who can I hand that to?
Well, I'll come over.
Okay.
Thank you. You have a copy as well?
Yes, thank you. It's just a couple words. I believe when we're making the edits here, I don't know where to go. I believe when we're making the edits here, we're accidentally creating ambiguity that doesn't exist in the original, so I would just like to change two words. In the second sentence, it says, "He may call for a standing vote," and I believe we should change it to, "The moderator will call for a standing vote." Reason being, the sentence completely would read, "If the moderator is in doubt, or if the vote as declared by the moderator is immediately questioned by seven of the town meeting members present, the moderator will call for a standing vote or an electronic tally." As we've seen, we love to question the votes when we're in doubt after the voice vote, and so this would ensure that we are then calling for that vote. Without doing that, I believe it makes it unclear, or it makes it sound like it's optional to have a standing vote or an electronic vote. So I move that we change "he may call" to "the moderator will call."
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Comments or questions with reference to the proposed amendment to Section 10? Yes?
Brian Costello, Precinct 9. I was going to make the same basic amendment, so I don't, can we, can I show it to you? Can we merge it somehow?
Well, you got your own. We've got one on the floor right now that has been, a motion has been made and seconded.
All right.
So, if, you know, let's deal with this, and you can have a further amendment if that's what folks want to do. Are there any comments or questions with reference to the proposed and seconded amendment? Yes?
Hi, Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. I think just in the spirit of transparency and teamwork, I would like to hear the language of the other proposed amendment. My inclination is that we always have electronic voting, so that we can know how our elected members vote that live within our precincts, rather than just doing a standing or a voice vote. I think it should be electronic voting first.
Before the body right now has been a motion to amend, and it has been seconded, so we should deal with this first. So unless, are there any further questions regarding this amendment? Yes?
Kristi Martino Richards, Precinct 4. If we pass her amendment, can we, if we like his amendment, can we do that?
We can amend and amend and reamend all evening, as long as you agree. So there is a motion before you that has been made and seconded regarding the amendment that the individual read. Is there further questions on that? Not hearing or seeing any, let's move to this simple majority. All those in favor of the proposed amendment shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Yes, the ayes have it. All right, so we have amended the underlying Article 40. So is there further discussion on the amended Article 40?
Cash Jane, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, please excuse my procedural lack of knowledge here, but are we allowed to ask for your opinion or the opinion of any of the tellers?
Of course, it's America, you can ask anything.
So what, what do you think?
I, I don't like spending public money, A. B, I think this is a solution in search of a problem. C, I think if the body chooses to do this, I, as moderator, would ask for members to serve on an implementation committee. Because I can tell you from speaking to other moderators in other towns, there's 75 different versions of clickers out there. I know there's a desire to make sure it's down to the individual town meeting member. There, so, you know, I get a Jim Kane clicker, I click if I'm a member. That has one cost associated, a basic, you know, green, red, or whatever, I don't want to vote number is, is a very, less expensive option. Those should all be vetted, before one night we all just run in here with various clickers, in my humble opinion.
And do any of the tellers want to tell us their thoughts?
Mr. Segelnik?
I guess my question is, if we go to electronic voting, how much time is that going to add to this meeting every year? Because you can't vote in 10 seconds like a voice vote, you probably have to take three to five minutes until everybody does their input, and then tally it up. So I'm assuming every article is going to add, even if it adds three minutes with 44 articles, that's over two more hours.
Did you have an answer to that? Mr. Misakar has some information regarding that assertion.
I would say it's quite the opposite. Normally, how it happens, and I've experienced this directly, is that at the end, when the moderator calls for the vote, it's set a 10-second window, you can vote, you know, yes or no, or change your mind, and your last vote that's registered is, is what happens, and it's a narrow window of time, and you would save time from standing votes that, you know, we've experienced several times this evening, so I, I think it's just the opposite.
Is, I guess I have to ask, is 10 seconds a realistic amount of time for people to decide?
Further comments or questions on the amended version of Article 40? Yes?
I strongly support electronic voting. I think it'll save a lot of time. Even just tonight, we wasted so much time doing standing votes, we could have had that time moving along. One question I have is whether or not moving in this direction gives us the opportunity to publicly, publish our voting records, because a lot of, a lot of Shrewsbury voters complain that they don't know anything about town meeting members, and this might be a good opportunity for us to actually publicize some information about who is here, what we're voting for, so it's not just people checking off random names at the ballot. So I guess my question is, is there, is there space for that conversation, perhaps later down the line? You had mentioned an implementation committee.
Of course, there's always space for that conversation. Once the data is collected, it is public data, and therefore it can be disseminated as people would see fit.
Okay, then I'd just like to reiterate that I think this is a really great opportunity for us to move in that direction, not just for our own sakes of getting out of here sooner, but for the sake of our constituents, for knowing who we are in the first place.
Yes, sir, up back. Yes, sir, up back.
Brian Costello, Precinct 9. Could you just read the amendment that she wrote?
Sure. Section 10. All votes on motions, including those that require two-thirds, shall be taken in the first instance by a voice vote or by an electronic tally at the option of the moderator. If the moderator is in doubt, or if the vote as declared by the moderator is immediately questioned by seven of the town meeting members present, the moderator will call for a standing vote or an electronic tally. A vote by secret ballot may be taken by motion to the effect duly made and adopted by two-thirds of town meeting members present and voting thereon.
Thank you. Could I, I hate to do this, I'm so sorry, everybody. Can I make a motion to amend the article once more? The motion is to amend the amended Section 10 to read.
Hold on, so you're amending her amendment?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Just want to make sure everybody's square.
I just think it's ambiguous, so I just wanted it, I just wanted it to be a little bit more specific. The motion would read, by inserting the following in First Paragraph, Section 10. All votes at town meeting shall be conducted by electronic tally using secure verifiable voting system. In the event of electronic system is unavailable or malfunctions, the moderator may call for a, for a, for a voice vote as a backup method. I also have Section 2.
So where are you putting your Section 1 in her amendment? Or are you just putting it in the body?
I think it's, I guess it's replacing the language.
So you're moving to strike her language and replace with yours?
Yes.
Okay?
And then I have as Paragraph 2, which is added to this woman's point, I apologize for forgetting your name. But I think she's right, and the, that would be insert a new paragraph that says, "The vote of each town meeting member shall be recorded and made available to the public no later than 10 calendar days following the conclusion of each session of town meeting. The recorded votes shall be published in the town's official website in a searchable, downloadable format." And I say that primarily because we're the town meeting, it's a public meeting, we're transparent. To, to the woman's point, we should all know where all of us stand. We are elected, the people that elected us should see how we vote.
So the gentleman has proposed an amendment to strike the earlier adopted amendment and offer his language. Is everyone clear on the language being offered at this time? No. So the gentleman, proponent, please make clear to your colleagues, because some are not clear, what you are actually proposing in language.
So the, the amended language, I think was, I felt was going in the right direction, but I think it still gives ambiguity on the moderator's ability to decide whether to use electronic tally or to use a voice or standing vote. Right? So what this does is it still creates ambiguity in a system where we want to be transparent to the voters. In order to be transparent to the voters, if we're using an electronic tally system, it's literally that. We vote, our names up on, on, upon the board, but they are ultimately published. We vote, it's quick, it's easy, and I just wanted to clear it up. It just basically says, "All votes are electronic tally through a secure verifiable system. If something breaks, it goes back to the way we do it now," is basically it. The added part was transparency in how we vote.
Are town meeting members clear on this? No, we're still not clear. Okay, so you adopted the, hold on, just a second, John. You adopted the earlier amendment to Article 40. The gentleman has proposed an amendment that would strike that earlier and, and move forward with his language. It has not been moved or seconded at this time. Mr. Segelnic.
I guess the question is, he did not make clear if he's completely deleting Section 10 and inserting his language, or is his language being inserted somewhere within Section 10? I have no idea what he's talking about.
Brian, would you care to clarify that?
So the language replaces, if you see on the board where it says Section 10. All votes, or the only thing it's changing is, shall be taken, after shall be taken, it replaces everything down to standing vote. Yeah. So it's basically saying, because this gives the ability, all this does is it says we can use electronic tally. We don't have to. If we're buying a system, we should use it as other towns use it. Thirty-two towns in Massachusetts use the one specific system that not only tracks each town meeting member, and it's, by the way, pretty inexpensive. And so it's an efficient means to do it. So I just tried to clear up the language, because I felt that it still gave ambiguity of when we would use tally and when we wouldn't use tally.
Are, are town meeting members clear on the gentleman's proposal? No. The gentleman, hold on, hold on, one second. The gentleman in the middle.
Mike Burns, Precinct 2. I understand the purpose of the amendment of forcing us to use electronic if we go down that path. My concern with that is if we authorize going with electronic, and it takes 12 to 13 months before we actually implement that system, then we're saying we have to use electronic tally before we've actually acquired it. And so I think leaving the ambiguity in there is fine, so we get a system, try it out. If we all decide, hey, this is great, then we amend this again and say, please use electronic as the first instance.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Further comments or questions?
Actually, I'm not opposed to.
Hold on, hold on, Brian, Brian.
I can, I can take the amendment away. I mean, no.
Okay, very good. Amendment has been withdrawn. Thank you very much, sir. Very good. At this time, we move on to Article 40 as amended by our colleague on the far right. Further comments or questions with respect to Article 40? Gentlemen down front.
Mr. Moderator, Dave Lennon, Precinct 8. I'm inclined to vote no on this. And, you know, I mean, our phone numbers are printed on the town's website. If someone wants to know how I voted on something, they could call me. I don't know, I think this system that we have right now is working pretty good. Might have to go to a third night, but such as it is. I, I'm just not a big fan of, you know, when, when I can say it, I mean, why should I push a button? You know, but I, you know, that's my opinion.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 40? Mr. Garabedian.
Charles Garabedian, Precinct 2. We have a system where we do it by voice vote. Usually, that's very clear to all of us. If it's not, then we stand. They count, we add. That's pretty accurate. I like to know if the electronic system fails, how do we know that it fails? To me, I don't trust the electronic system, I'm sorry, when we have something that's very obvious to us. We can see, we can hear, it's accurate. And maybe some people say that, is it $12,500 do we want to invest? Well, if you don't want that $12,500, then I'll take it, thank you very much. But we must save every single penny we have. We've been talking about schools, we're talking about, we're afraid there's not enough money. And now we're going to go and spend and waste, in my opinion, $12,500. To me, that's a lot of money. I'm, I'm totally against it. We have something that works, why do we get rid of it? I can't understand. But I'm, I'm 82 years old, maybe that's why. And I admit that that's sin. Thank you, Lord.
Very good, Greg Richard.
Thank you.
Go ahead. The mic's not on. Still not on.
There's no button. There we go, that's them. That's, the buttons are back there. Greg Richards, Precinct 4. The reason I wanted to speak on this is, I think one of the episodes we actually did back on the unselect days was looking at attendance at, at town meeting. And one of the things we really found, which I think is super critical on the transparency side, and I know you're going to be shocked when I say these things, that what the data would show you, and what I think the residents at large want to see, is there are town meeting members, because of the lack of ability of granularity on vote, that when you would count up, if you counted up today the standing votes, and you look at who actually attended the meeting, those numbers will not match. So a couple of things happened. Number one, town meeting members leave before the end of the meeting, we know that. The other thing that happens, which I could prove with data, is town meeting members can show up and actually leave and never actually come into the chamber. They can sign in, you can't see that. One of the things that going around and campaigning was super critical to a lot of residents was making sure that we are fully transparent on how decisions are made. People felt that there was ambiguity on that. And if we will not willingly post and show what we voted on, how we voted, this is a great system that allows us to do that. And actually, I think, Mr. Garcia, when you ran, one of the things you said is that you posted your votes online, which I think was, you know, great. And I think everybody here should be willing to stand up and at least post that vote and say, here's how I voted on the article. And to your point, you can get a phone call and, and somebody can ask you, why did you vote that way? And that's a healthy conversation. So the reason I think this is super important is so that anybody in this community can know exactly why you made a certain decision, or at least how you made a decision, and then can have a dialogue around why that decision was made. This is the only way to do that. So that's why I'm so in favor of going down this path. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to the amended Article 40? Yes, sir, gentleman.
Anthony Thomas, Precinct 3. I just want to do a counterargument to what you just said. If there is someone who can't attend a meeting for a certain reason, why should someone be able to, like, contact them? Let's just say it's a medical, like, issue. And someone's like, oh, you didn't attend two town meetings because, like, why? Oh, I had a medical issue. Like, I missed two town meetings two years ago because I had cancer. I don't want someone from the town harassing me for not coming to town meeting because I had a diagnosis that I was in the hospital, I couldn't attend. Like, I think that's very unfair to people. Like, it's your duty when you're elected to show up, but to have your name thrown out there is a little unfair to a certain extent. Now, if you're running for a bigger position, I think it's totally fair to share your votes, but I think it's unnecessary, it costs money. And is it really worth it to save a minute or two at the end of the day? And that's all.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Hold on, hold on. Who have we not heard from this evening? Mr. LeBeau.
John LeBeau, Precinct 5. I have a question, and I guess I have a comment. May I ask, who proposed this?
I don't know.
I'd like to know.
All right, I'll, I'll take responsibility, if I may. Mr. Moderator, I, I did raise this with, with the select board. I have watched some other town meetings where they do use this. It creates efficiency. I want to be clear that my intent with it was the efficiency of this meeting. And it's, we always hear the ayes have it, the nays have it. It's sort of real time, you get this 10-second window, everybody plugs in, you see exactly how many yays and nays. So you can say with certainty to the community that this passed town meeting by X percent of vote. And so right now, it is public record who, who showed up to town meeting, it is not public record who voted. I, that wasn't the intent behind it, it will be documented. So some see that as an enhancement. I understand that some others are uncomfortable with it. But that was the spirit in, in making this recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, I find it curious that the executive branch wants to direct the legislative body on how it should create its rules. And I do want to mention, particularly because I think there's a lot of new town meeting members, at the May 2018 annual town meeting, there was a citizens petition article to create an electronic voting committee, a town, for town meeting. And that committee, as the article set forth, I believe had four town meeting members. It also had a selectman, the town clerk, and the IT director of the town. A report was released in April of 2019, and it made the following conclusions and following recommendations, and this is the entirety, I'm not doing some selective editing. There were four recommendations. Recommendation one was the committee recommends that the town does not pursue an electronic voting system at this time. Recommendation two is that the committee recommends that the town reconsider electronic voting in the future. That three is, if an electronic voting system is considered in the future, the committee recommends having a pilot session at a town meeting to further evaluate the technology. And recommendation four was, if a pilot of an electronic voting system is considered, the committee recommends a survey be sent to town meeting members after the pilot for feedback. I agree with several of the previous speakers that I really don't see the need. Is it a good to have or a need to have? I'm curious if $12,500 is all that's going to do it? Are there going to be ongoing maintenance costs? How soon will these machines need to be replaced or serviced? But if we are to move forward at this, I would like, I would suggest that we think about what the town meeting members and the other members of that committee suggested, and that we move forward in a little bit more of a deliberative, thoughtful manner to make sure that if we do do this, we're getting the right technology, the right equipment, and we're doing this in the right way. Thank you.
Further comments or questions, Ms. Hilton?
Bridgette Hilton, Precinct 7. First of all, I want to actually thank the executive branch for listening to so many of us who said that electronic voting would make it easier us, for us to attend these meetings and stay at these meetings, because they do tend to run long. For a lot of us, or not a lot of us, but enough of us in this room have young kids that are home right now without us, with their other parent or grandparents or whoever. And, you know, it does make it a little difficult when we're doing this on a school night, to stay here till midnight, which we probably will tonight. So thank you for listening, number one. Number two, I think, I want to separate out two different issues that are being conflated here, right? The idea that we would have electronic vote, voting is one idea, and the idea that those votes would be publicly published is another, separate thing. What we're being asked to vote on tonight, as, as Section 10 stands, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is simply whether or not we would allow for electronic voting. I don't know, I know there probably are some people in this room who write checks to pay all their bills, but I don't know a ton of people that do that. I, I think we are moving in a direction where most of what we do is going to be electronic. There may be some fear around it and, and some adjustment, but I don't think that that's a good enough reason to stall the march of progress, to try to make these meetings run more efficiently and, and be more, you know, reasonable in timeline. I think it would be an important change for us to see in the town. I'm actually not strongly for or against this one, but I think that we should make sure that we're clear on what we're actually voting for, which is not to necessarily have your votes public, your publicly available. That's another question that I think is worth us talking about and considering, but that's just not what's on the floor right now.
Further comments or questions on Article 40 as amended? Gentleman in the middle? And I'll go to you.
Cash Jane, Precinct 4. Another amendment? No, kidding. I ask that we move the motion, please.
What was that?
I ask that we move the motion.
Question's been made to move the question. We will now move to that immediate vote. All those in favor of moving the question will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Will now move to proposed motion as amended under Article 40. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. I'm going to say the noes have it. Shall, shall we go to the standing vote? Perfect, there we go. All right, tellers, take your position. If the tellers are in position, would all those in favor please rise and remain standing?
Twenty-six.
You may be seated. Would all those opposed please rise and remain standing?
Eighteen.
Sixteen.
Thirteen.
And this is why we need electronic voting. On this matter, 84 in the affirmative, 52 in the negative. All right, town meeting members, as you probably noticed, we've passed the hour 10:30. Only by a vote of this party can we continue to power through this evening and finish off the final four items. Is there a desire to stay past 10:30?
Yes.
How many people? Might as well take a standing vote, right? So all those in favor saying past 10:30 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Justin. Article 41.
Article 41.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 41 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
This article seeks to transfer $12,500 in free cash to fund the acquisition of electronic voting keypads and receivers, which also includes one year's cost of upgrades, remote technical support, and staff training via Zoom. The annual cost after year one will be $995.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 41? Yes, along the aisle.
In the previous discussion, it sounded like there was not a decision made as to exactly what sort of technology to purchase or what its actual abilities would be. So I'm curious as to how it was arrived at this particular dollar number as, well, this is what's needed when there's different technologies that will certainly have different costs.
Mr. Mizuka.
If I may, Mr. Dobson respond. She's done the legwork on this.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. With regards to your question, we did initial market research just to see what technology was available. So that involved looking at all the communities that currently utilize electronic voting. The three vendors that appeared to be frequently utilized by all of those communities was Meridia, Option Technologies, and Echo 360, so the three biggest vendors in the electronic voting space. As this article was more formalized and put forth, what we did was, in accordance with the procurement laws here in Massachusetts, requested three quotes from those vendors, and Meridia Technologies provided the technology at the lowest cost. So that was how this cost figure was reached.
Of course.
Many of my colleagues have expressed interest in having our votes recorded and published for that price tag. Would the system be able to do that?
Yes, it would be able to do that. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 41? Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll call the roll on this. All those in favor of Article 41 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Justin. Move to Article 42.
I move the printed motion under Article 42.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 42 by a vote of eight to zero.
By way of reminder, the Planning Board voted unanimously in favor as well. Mr. Mizuka.
So the purpose of this article is to codify existing practices, Selco, and similar requirements for new subdivisions within the general bylaws, requiring that all future utility services, which would have been hung on poles and overhead, would be required to be undergrounded. This same proposal was made to this body last year, and I apologize, due to procedural error, we had to go back through the process this year. So it's exactly the same as it was last year, and we're asking for your reconsideration now that the Planning Board has held a public hearing on this matter and voted favorably.
Further, excuse me, questions or comments with reference to Article 42? Not hearing or seeing, yep, Ed.
Yeah, okay, there we are. Just want to be clear in the intent. It starts off saying that no utility shall, you know, do whatever you don't want them to do. By Section 3, it starts talking about any person who installs. So I'm just trying to understand the scope of this. This is to prevent or to deny utilities from putting overhead wires into new developments? Is that fairly correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So when it starts to mention persons, is that, is that like the homeowner or?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, sorry. I believe, and Town Council may be able to help me here, but I believe when it comes to fines and penalties, as it's associated with the language, it needs to be more specific than the utility.
Counsel.
Moderator, I don't have a problem with that term in that enforcement provision. I think person would be broadly defined, whether it's a corporation, entity, developer, that we could issue a fine for violation of this bylaw.
Ed, not the homeowner, was that your question?
I'm not aware that homeowners would be installing the utility lines themselves. So I don't think there's great likelihood for that to be an issue.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 42? Not hearing or seeing anyone, we'll call the roll. It's requiring a simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. The ayes have it. Article 43.
I move the printed motion under Article 43.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 43 by a vote of seven to one.
Mr. Mizuka.
This article seeks to create a new section within the general bylaws that would enable minor repairs and improvements to private ways within the town if the repairs are deemed a public necessity. This bylaw conforms with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 6N, which enables cities and towns to make repairs to private ways using public funds. Otherwise, public funds cannot be used to make those repairs. As a reminder, in 1959, the town accepted MGL Chapter 40, Section 6C, which allows for winter plowing of these private ways. This added bylaw would enable the town to ensure public safety and public works vehicles can safely serve residents of private ways. Occasionally, private ways become severely deteriorated, and residents do not have the capacity to make the repairs.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 43? Yes, Mr. Rattigliano.
Hi, Chris Rattigliano, Precinct 7. I have a problem with this article, and it's maintaining private roadways when you drive around the town and you see how terrible some of our public roadways are now. I mean, just driving here from Maine down Oak, the roads are disaster. Carter Road, they spent four or five days patching it, and it hasn't been, it was built in 1990 or 1989. I understand the previous administration was really into chip and tar. I think that's what they used to do, when a lot of these roadways that we don't, we can't afford to do the tear and pave, I think it's called, or something like that. So, you know, spending money on private roadways when our current roadways on public ways are a disaster, I can't support this.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 43? Mr. Kirk.
Yeah, Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. I got three questions about this article.
Go.
Okay. First one is, do you have a rough estimate about how many streets presently would need this sort of attention? Are we talking hundreds, thousands, millions?
Mr., who wants this one? Nick, you want this? Somebody take it. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nick Repetta, Highway Division Manager. I don't have a number of roads for you, but there are a little over 13 miles of private streets in town.
Mr. Mizuka.
Yeah, and just to be really clear, we're talking like pothole repairs and small grading activities to make sure we can get the public equipment that we currently need to service, like fire trucks, ambulances, plow trucks across these ways. This is not turning them into public roadways and bringing them to standard.
Oh, no.
Just to be clear.
I had no doubt about that.
Okay.
I was just wondering if, like, tomorrow, 70 trucks would suddenly appear throughout the town, filling potholes and private streets, that's all.
Go ahead.
The second one is, the Select Board may, at its discretion, assess a betterment for the total cost of the project. And are there criteria for when that's going to be assessed?
Mr. Mizuka.
Yes, there would be. I mean, it's in conformance with the requirements under the general laws, and if a betterment would need to be assessed, it would have to be voted on by the residents prior to, and they would have to accept that.
Okay. And the last one is Section B4. It says, temporary repairs may be undertaken on a private way, subject to this bylaw or to a continuous portion of such a way, which begins and ends at the intersection or conjunction with another way. In other words, dead-end streets would not be repaired, but through ways would be?
Counsel.
I don't read that provision as prohibiting improvements to a dead-end private way, because it says "or." Temporary repairs may be undertaken on a private way, subject to this bylaw, or to a continuous portion. So I don't think it's excluding dead-end private ways from being subject to this.
Well, forgive me, but it says a continuous portion of such a way, and then it qualifies what that way is. The way is, it begins and ends at an intersection or conjunction with another way.
Right, but the first part, prior to the "or," I think would cover the dead-end way.
Okay. Well, square, Mr. Kirk.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 43? Yes.
Hi, Colleen Corbett, Precinct 10. I'm a Wheels on Wheels driver, and some of these roads are unbelievable. They're dangerous even to walk. So I strongly recommend and support this article, and thank the town for addressing it. And, I mean, particularly in the winter, these roads are just horrible, and many of our most vulnerable residents live in these areas. Thank you.
Certainly. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 43? Yes, Ms. Steele.
Lisa Steele, Precinct 6. I live on one of the roads that might be affected by this. We have eight houses. It's a small private way, just off of Maple Street, right near the police station. We have potholes. I have been trying for two years to get the other seven houses to throw a couple thousand dollars into a kitty to patch the potholes. It's hurting cats. We would be incredibly grateful for the town to fix the damage that's caused often by the plows, tearing up the hot patch and the cold patch that's on the streets. It would be wonderful. And all we're looking for are those small repairs.
Ms. Conlon.
Michelle Conlon, Precinct 10. I'm curious if we could hear from our fire chief and police chief about the challenges that our emergency response personnel have with traversing some of these private roads. From my understanding, this was sort of born out of an incident where there was a house fire on a private roadway or adjacent, a road that was adjacent to a private road, and there were some challenges getting our fire apparatus to properly address the house fire. So if we may ask the moderator if we may hear from our...
If you could grab a mic so that everyone in the hall could hear you both.
Seth Colby, Fire Chief. I am not sure of a specific fire incident that we weren't able to get to. We have had issues in the past years where there have been houses that we haven't been able to get to. We did have a medical emergency a number of years ago, and we actually had to get towed out because we did have a fire truck stuck. We were able to get in, and they couldn't get back out. So it is certainly a problem that we do encounter.
On the police side, our vehicles obviously aren't as big as the fire trucks, so we typically don't have a problem. It may take a little bit longer to get there, but we have most, all of our vehicles now, SUVs and full-wheel drive, so we're able to get to the homes.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 43? I'm not seeing or hearing anyone, therefore we'll call the roll. On Article 43, simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you, chiefs. Article 44.
I move the printed motion under Article 44.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 44 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
I'm getting there. This article proposes to make a minor adjustment to the recently adopted Wetlands Protection bylaw. The purpose of this is to save proponents and applicants, residents, significant funds, approximately 80% on notifying of butters while still complying with the regulations. This adjusts the type of mail from certified to certificate of proof of mailing.
Comments or questions from town meeting members with reference to Article 44? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll go to a vote. Regarding Article 44, a simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. The motion carries, I think I heard, a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All right, all those in favor, all those opposed, we're adjourned.